We're calling it to order, please attendance.
What David?
Steven, can you?
Roll call. Yeah, I'm sorry.
Mr. Unger?
Here.
Ms. Ulrich?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
Mr. McElravy?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Moravec?
Here.
And I am present.
All right, you have and have been provided in your packet the minutes from the October 11th, 2022 meeting, are there any motions with regard to those?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as written.
All right, we have a motion, are there any seconds?
I'll second.
Motion and a second, any discussion for or against? Hearing and seeing none, we'll call the roll, please, on the question.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. McElravy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moravec?
Yes.
And I am yes.
All right, so that passes, I don't know if I can count that high, four, five, six, seven, zero. Next item, we have a citizen address, we don't have a sign up, but we do have, if you're interested in addressing CIC, please indicate that interest now. Come on up. Thanks for coming out tonight.
Thank you, good evening, just have a question about the financial reports, I was curious if the director and operators insurance has been paid for 2023?
Yes, it has.
Okay, great, thank you, and that the balance of $73,095.19 is the balance, I guess that's prior to the DNO insurance, and I would just like to ask that when calling the roll, we call it in order of alphabetical order, thank you.
Any other citizen comments or concerns? All right, we'll go to new business, item four is the annual election of trustees.
So, wanted to point out that Article Three, Section Section Two says the election of trustees shall take place at the annual meeting of the members, we're at a special meeting, so that would be tonight as our annual meeting. And so, this will be the time to elect our trustees for the CIC, the number of trustees shall consist of not less than three persons, and shall be greater number as may be determined by the members from time to time, so traditionally, it's been our three trustees plus other members, and so, at this time, we would open the floor to nominations.
I would nominate that Matt would remain as president of the Community Improvement Corporation, Matt Waller.
I'll second that one.
I appreciate that, and I'm fine with that.
I have no other nominations.
All right, I'll second that, how's that?
I third it.
Okay.
Okay, well, let's, why don't we, why don't we just go through one office at a time, so we have, we have a motion and a second for president, we'll call the question on that. Call the roll on that.
Start with Ms. Ulrich, second.
Yes.
Okay. Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
I'm going to abstain.
Would we vote on that as well? Mr. McElravy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moravec?
Yes.
I'm yes.
All right, all right, that passes, six, zero to one, now we have a vice president, I think, Mr. Unger, you were vice president, right?
I think you nominated me last year.
Yes, I nominate Kathy Ulrich to be vice president of the CIC.
That was last year.
Right, yeah, and I think that, okay, so I'll second that, then Ms. Ulrich for vice president?
I have to abstain.
Well, we're not voting yet.
Well, I thought I'm not nominating myself.
Okay. All right. Any, we have a motion and a second, any discussion for or against? All right, we will call the vote on that.
Ms. Ulrich?
Abstain.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. McElravy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moravec?
Yes.
All right, that passes six, zero, one, next. Is it seven?
Two, three, four, five, six, seven.
You abstained, so it's six, zero.
Six, zero, one.
Well, there's five of you, right? Six, seven.
Six, six, zero, and then one abstained.
Oh, okay, I'm just, three there.
You're messing with me bad today, aren't you?
There and four there, that's why I'm
Must be Friday the 13th.
He doesn't count.
Oh, that's right, sorry, oh my God, I'm way off, I'm looking and not counting men, not
I think you count, Scott.
I know, sorry, I'm counting men, sorry, I'm having a, I'm having a couple of faux pas tonight.
At this point, do we have any nomination, that passes, six, zero, one, Ms. Ulrich will be, Ulrich will be vice president, any nominations for secretary?
Who's the current?
Was that Jeff?
Mr. Springsteen is the current secretary.
Current secretary.
I'll second that.
For who?
Steven, Springsteen.
So we have a motion and we have a second for Mr. Springsteen, any other nominations?
None from me.
None from me.
Any discussion for or against? All right, we'll have a vote on that, Mr. Springsteen, please call the roll.
Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. McElravy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moravec?
Yes.
And I will abstain.
That's six, zero, one, that passes, and next we have treasurer, at this point, I'll open up the nomination for Mr. McElravy for treasurer.
I'll second the nomination of Mr. McElravy for treasurer.
Any discussion, any other nominations? Any discussion? All right, we will call the vote, sir.
Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. McElravy?
Abstain.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moravec?
Yes.
And I am yes.
All right, that passes six, zero, one, to our treasurer, and then we have the note, historically, the CIC has also appointed an executive director, and we'll open that up for discussion to see if there wants to be, if we want to do any nominations, if we do indeed tend to go in that direction, and the executive director's role in this has generally been, I think that a lot of times to sign documents and things, I think before it was Mr. Mills, if I'm not mistaken, and he and I would communicate if there was something that needed, needed to be done, that didn't need a discussion or a vote or whatever, you know, like paying an invoice or, or some kind of action that doesn't require a discussion, so if we want to go that route, we will open that up for various ideas.
Is there a conflict with having you fill both of those roles, Matt?
I don't know that there's a conflict, I think in terms of efficiency, it's best usually to have, I don't, I don't know, we have never done it that way, I guess I'm just guessing.
That's going to leave Mr. Moravec to do it, then. I don't know, I don't want to do it.
Well, with Mr. Miller?
With Mr. Miller?
Generally, I think we've tried to keep it, someone in this building, I think, because they're here on a daily basis.
I nominate David, I nominate, I nominate David Miller for that position.
I'll second.
Mr. Solomon, is that, is that correct? Executive Director?
Yeah, I mean, I think that makes sense that someone in house is here.
Not to throw shade on Mr. Moravec there.
My office is officially across the street.
No other nominations from me.
All right, we'll call the vote on that.
Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. McElravy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller? Mr. Moravec?
A resounding yes.
Yeah, one less thing for you to do.
All right, that passes six, zero, one, for executive director. All right, that appears to be it, are there any other items, we usually have on the agenda a
Well, there's approval of financial statements.
Oh, yeah, financials, I'm sorry.
There is an option for other officers who have not yet been appointed.
Right, I don't know if we want to go that route, or?
I'm not, I'm not interested in any other officers.
Item C is the financial statements, Q4 2022, Mr. McElravy, perhaps you'd lead us into that?
Happy to do that, the financial statements for the fourth quarter of 2022 are pretty simple, there was no financial activity in October, November, or December, leaving us with a closing balance at the end of the year of $73,095.19.
All right, are there any motions, we do have to do a motion to accept those, right? Is there a motion to accept the, approve the financial statements for Q4 2022 as provided?
I'll make a motion that we approve the financials as presented.
Any seconds?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion for or against?
So that, that's how we finish the year at 73,095.19?
That's correct.
Now, is that in any type of interest-bearing account, or what type of account is that lying in?
It's in a nonprofit checking account.
Okay, then is that the best place for it?
Yes.
Okay. No other questions from me.
And a couple of people have commented to me about carrying this balance, I have no issue carrying, I'm not in a hurry to spend, and I think that's pretty representative of most of the folks that sit on this board, that, you know, we don't want to rush out and spend it on something. Okay, call the roll, or call the question?
Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. McElravy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moravec?
Yes.
And I am yes.
All right, that passes, seven, zero, and now we have a discussion on 2023 meeting schedule.
What are we compelled to have as far as meetings?
There, I just asked, we don't have anything compelled, it's, we just talked about that.
Our charter, there's, it just says one meeting a year?
No, and it can be as needed, since we really have nothing, since we just did the trustee, the, all the boards and the financials, what's your feeling about just having it as needed?
Yeah, I don't have an issue with that, I mean, we do need to have, we do have the same rules that apply to a trustee meeting, if we do call one, we have to have notify notice and notice in the papers and things like that, I don't know if that given that in the cost to notice the stuff, which used to be a couple bucks, but now is a lot more, I don't know if it makes sense to set up a couple of dates as kind of
Yeah, I don't believe we have to publish in the paper, I think we
It just says publish on our website.
Okay. All right, all right, I'm fine with that.
As needed, are you okay, are you okay with the as needed?
Certainly.
All right, so we have a motion and a second to meet as needed, we'll call the vote on that.
Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. McElravy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moravec?
Yes.
And I am yes.
That passes seven, zero, and often we have any kind of loose ends or discussion here, if you have any, now's the time. If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn at 5:43.
I motion that we would adjourn the Community Improvement Corporation at 5:43 on Tuesday, February 14th.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Unger, who seconded it, I didn't?
Ms. Ulrich.
All right, we'll call a question in?
Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Mr. McElravy?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Moravec?
Yes.
And I am yes.
That passes seven, zero, we are adjourned.
Okay, it's six o'clock, and time for the special meeting of the Board of Trustees, will you want to take roll call, Mr. Baker?
Ms. Ulrich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
Any new business?
Yes, so, board, we wanted to call this meeting to talk about this concept of a capital reserve, in, in the meeting packet, you'll find a memo that I pulled together outlining a strategy that I've laid out for how we can start to better plan for capital spends across all of our departments, when we went through and did the facility master plan several years ago, we found that there were a lot of needs and a lot of competing needs across our departments, so fire stations, renovations of fire stations, there are police department needs with them expanding and kind of bursting at the seams, we've got some facility improvements that are going on, and needs that are needed in this building as well, whether it's for our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems or other systems, and so, rather than taking the reactive approach, we thought, let's try to get proactive about how we do our capital planning, one concept that I had in my mind as we were kind of internally discussing ways that we could best approach capital planning was, why don't we look at taking whatever budgetary surplus we have at year end from our general fund, and start to store that away in what we would call a capital reserve, and then, if we went through that approach and through that sort of way, we would slowly start to build little by little, year over year, and get to a place where we have enough cash set aside to do some of these larger projects as they're needed, there would be some opportunities built in in this plan that I drafted, where our department directors would meet with you all in another work session to make requests for dollars from said capital reserve, and that's an opportunity for you all to weigh levy needs against operating needs against this reserve, to determine what the best and most appropriate use of those dollars could be at any given time, so I provided an illustrative example in the memorandum as to what this might look like and how it might function if we were to just look at 2022 year-end surplus, there was about $1.1 million left over between budgeted expense and budgeted revenue, so if we set those dollars aside, that would be seeding for our capital fund, and then as we move forward through 2023, I actually anticipate that we'll probably end year end closer to $1.3 million in the positive this year, because we've had some grant money come in for our sidewalk project down on Coal Rain Avenue, and that grant money amounts to about $1.3 million, and so, as you can kind of see, we're starting to build up some dollars quickly that would be helpful to avoid issuing debt for future projects, and would allow us to think a little more strategically about bigger picture purchases that are not an easy thing to fit in any one budget, having said all that in the intro there, one other thing that we would want to keep in mind, especially as we're doing this, is making sure that we're never pooling our general fund reserve below our reserve balance guideline that we set via policy, I believe that's a one-year balance, so we would always be looking toward keeping enough dollars set aside in the general fund reserves so that we're not pooling down on that balance long-term, so, with that lengthy introduction, I wanted to turn it over to you all to get feedback on said plan, see if maybe you all had some different ideas or approaches to this, and to just facilitate a conversation around our capital planning and how we can do it better.
Have we decided where it would be invested in?
So, all of our idle cash right now gets invested through Red Tree, and so, it'll continue to churn dollars as it sits.
Is the Red Tree where we're earning about 4%?
I think right now that rate fluctuates just depending on
Okay, I, we had talked about it, it was earning about 4% interest, okay.
So, the problem with that, and I support this 100%, the problem with the Red Tree thing now is that it's actually losing value based upon the rate of inflation.
Yeah, I mean, when inflation exceeds your interest rate, yes, that is correct.
Is this, would this be a restricted fund?
So, the way I'm proposing this is what we would actually just call a reserve account on our ledger, so it's not actually creating a new fund, and the, the reason I, I am a little reluctant to suggest creating a new fund is, once you do that, in order to get dollars out, it comes under a little more scrutiny from the state, and if we ever ran into a circumstance where we needed cash in order to get through, say, a levy that failed, or whatever else it might be, we would have to go to the Court of Common Pleas, and then the Court of Common Pleas would have to make a determination as to whether or not they would release those funds for us to use them, so if we create a reserve account on, on our ledger, in theory, it's still all in the general fund, but we're holding it aside so that we're not using it on our churn of general fund expenses.
So what would be the, I guess the guideline, let's say we're 15 years down the road, we've gone through this Board of Trustees and two others, there's a Board of Trustees that shows up that wants to spend it on, just go wild, and spend everything that's been saved for 15 years, what's, what other checks are there other than, if the community doesn't like that, they just vote them out next time, what other checks and balances are there to make sure that that just doesn't get all spent?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know that there really is another check or balance, just like resolutions that you all authored today can be undone by a resolution authored tomorrow by a new board, even under the scenario I described, if we were to create a separate fund for this, which we can do, that board would be able to go to the Court of Common Pleas, and then, again, that's not necessarily in their hands, it also wouldn't necessarily be 100% in our hands, too, the state auditor may say, because they have to approve all of our new fund creations, no, we don't like your fund, we're not going to say yes, now, that's never happened, so it probably will be approved, but just for
This is kind of a pseudo-fund, it's really not a, because it's not a restricted fund, it's not a
It'd be a fund on paper.
Okay.
And I made this suggestion from my time in Hamilton County, we did this quite a bit, we did it more so around large judgments that we knew that were likely going to happen, so, like with the Tracy Hunter case, we knew that we were going to have to pay her legal fees, and so we set aside money in a reserve account on the ledger so that when we were reflecting our general fund balances and things, we weren't inflating it with dollars that likely weren't going to be there.
Could we tie spending of this so-called reserve fund to, always to be attached to like a special meeting of the trustees, a specially called meeting, so that it's very clear down the road that, hey, we saved X amount to this, and these trustees called a special meeting to spend it, and they didn't insert it maybe like line 38 of a budget somewhere, and try to, try to slip one pass a goalie?
Yeah, so I mean, one, one avenue to get to that would be to maybe speak to it in either a resolution or the existing rules of meeting procedures.
That's where I was headed at, the rules of, yeah.
So that could be something that we could work in there, that speaks to a capital reserve work session, now, granted, anything that you all say approve, or say, yes, go do this with these dollars, still would come up in that budget later in the year, so when we bring that up for temporary and permanent appropriations, it's still going to show up there as a line item, because that's how we actually appropriate in order to spend, but you all could set parameters saying that, hey, we're not going to, we're not going to improve, say, general fund capital dollars unless it comes through this set aside process.
So then that would be a two-step process, it would be, to get rid of that, you'd have to, if, for instance, it were written in the rules, rules of the board, it would be removing that from the rules of the board, if you don't want to have the special meeting, you would have to remove it, a future board would have to remove it from the rules.
Yep, yep.
And then they would have to then spend it, so it's a two-step process, so there's a little bit
Yeah, now they could do both in one meeting.
Sure. But I think there's a great deal more transparency to something like that.
Sure. And my goal would be to, you know, depending on, like, let's say there are no requests from the capital reserve, I, I think it still would be beneficial in said work session in, say, late September, early October, to provide the department heads with the opportunity to speak to you all in the public in a work session about what their capital plans are that are built into their levies and other funds, so that we're just having a better conversation about what we're replacing and why, you know, I feel very confident that the items that we replace are needed to be replaced, but that's hard for people to see, especially if they're looking at a piece of paper that maybe says that, you know, a fire truck, and this is a hypothetical, but let's say a fire truck only has 20,000 miles on it, well, it may only have 20,000 miles, but it may have, you know, countless hours of operation, and so those are just opportunities for us to better talk about what we're doing and why.
And my last question on this is, Mr. Unger mentioned like a scenario where he would want to, let's say, put into the budget in addition to the leftover X amount towards that, and that would be something we would just write as a budget item.
Sorry.
You talked about that with the paying of the
When we talked about the, the money that was bonded up for firehouses, I talked about setting aside something to go towards
Yeah, and that's exactly what we could do here, we could decide in seven years, when we're able to call those bonds, we could take a look at that capital reserve as a board and say, hey, we've got the money to pay off these bonds now, and the board can make that decision to spend the capital reserve toward that at that point.
No, I think your question was, we're used to paying X amount per year.
Right, we were paying 980 a year in debt service, then we were
And it's 780 or something.
We were at zero, and now we're at 800.
So that extra, that $2,000, $200,000 float, we could put in this reserve fund?
We could do that, yes.
I think that, was that, Dan, is that what you
Right, yeah, we, yes. We were at 980, and we were at zero, and now we're at 800, so the difference between 800 and 980 is 180 that we would put in there.
And this is something I wanted, you know, I love long-term thinking, I love trying to look years down the road, and decades down the road, I think that's, ultimately gets better policy, and it leaves the place better off, and I think that that's, I've been, I've wanted something like this since the beginning, it's just, it's very difficult with the constant pulls and tugs on the budget and just items that you need, and, you know, things that come up that you don't really expect, but I think it's, it's good to develop that, that discipline to have that set aside, and with that, I'll yield to the rest, I know I've kind of dominated this, but I'm very excited about this.
So in other local governments, and I'll use the city of Cincinnati as an example, they have the convention center, and the money that was going to maintain the convention center was diverted to fund the bonds that were sold for the parking garage for the soccer stadium, which, in my role on the convention facilities authority, I was the man on an island vote against that, and so, that counts as deferred maintenance for the convention center when they don't do the maintenance that they scheduled, hopefully, we're not doing things that way here in Coal Rain, do we have any big items that we have put off besides the two fire stations which are getting replaced, something else out there like deferred maintenance, the roof on this building was supposed to be replaced X number of years ago, and we've put it off, or are we pretty much up on what we're supposed to be doing?
So there are a number of items that probably do need to be replaced, and so those would be things that we could start to talk more strategically about, so when we're looking at capital planning and saying, hey, this, this roof is 25 years old, it's now time to replace it.
I mean, something that you specifically, you've just been here for a few years, but is there something that was cut out of the budget two years ago, and like, we really wanted to replace this two years ago?
Okay, so, and, and this is where we have some of the just give and take conversations with our facility managers, so for example, and we were just revisiting this today, one of the conversations that we've had with him is around our elevator for this building, so this elevator is kind of on its last leg, if we proactively replace it, it's going to be a big-ticket item, if we wait until it breaks and then replace it, it's still going to be a big-ticket item, so his recommendation was we wait until it breaks, and so we put money aside in the budget so that we have a placeholder, if it does break, that we can get it fixed and up and running again, but
So that money in the budget for the elevator, that just doesn't get spent in '22, so you move it to the '23, so that would kind of be a capital reserve for a specific item?
Potentially, and that's, and this is where then we're referring back to our capital policies and what constitutes as capital and what doesn't, and I think it depends on what that project looks like, and if we're, if we're repairing and able to repair the elevator, now, in his mindset, we're probably not going to be able to repair it because the mechanical systems have changed so much, but replacement would be a capital item, so yes.
So, so my question is, that, that fund would have a positive balance, but I guess my interpretation of a negative balance for that fund would be any of these deferred items, such as the elevator.
Yeah, and we could certainly list those out, and we could have those kind of sitting there as like almost the check on, on the number, so that you could say, well, you know, the, the balance of the fund is 1 million, but you've got maybe $600,000 worth of mechanical system updates that you know are coming down the pike, so really, your, your fund is
One of those items would be the, the water heater up in the Public Works Building that came up in December.
And that's been since fixed, so that, that should be okay.
Was that on a schedule to be replaced, or was that a wait till it breaks and fix it?
I don't think that was on a schedule to be replaced, but there are a few other items that are on a schedule to be replaced.
And I think one of the things our, the facility manager we hired a couple years ago has brought to the table, is it's my understanding, he has gone around and inventoried every piece of equipment that we have, which, which we never had before.
Yes, and, and like this building, for example, is just over 20 to 25 years old, so it's got a lot of items that are starting to reach the end of their useful life, that's why last year we spent a decent amount of money upgrading the zone controls for our That's why last year we spent a decent amount of money upgrading the zone controls for our HVAC. That's why I think in twenty eighteen, we had to replace the entire air chiller, which was an expensive endeavor. So we know that there are probably going to be some electrical things that are going to be next related to that. We know that the gutters, the windows, the roof are probably also going to be on that short-term list. So they're items that I wouldn't call deferred yet, but are coming up in the next several years.
As far as an item on a balance sheet that doesn't really show unless you've got it specifically set aside like the elevator.
Yes, exactly.
Let me get back to something that Mr. Unger just mentioned. Make sure I understood this correctly, so we didn't have a physical inventory of items until?
Until Bob got here.
So isn't that a requirement by the state?
So what, what Dan is getting at is actual building components, whereas what's required by the state are physical like this table.
Copy machine, yeah.
Yeah, copy machine, so there's a slight difference.
Okay, it's just an inventory that lists all the air handling units, the.
Yeah, every single VAV box that we've got.
System, every zone box, every other, the backfiller, preventer for the building, all that kind of stuff. And Bob's done a great, Mr. Delapasta's done a fabulous job with that.
So I've heard it sounds like out of one of the three trustees, a desire to try to work something into the rules of business for your, your meetings. And if there's a second of you that would also like for me to draft something in that regard, I can put that on my agenda to bring forward at a future trustee meeting for formal consideration and vote.
Sure.
I think we're all in agreement.
Thank you for doing this. This is, when, when you sent this out, I think I talked to you the next day. I love it, I love the idea of staying ahead of this.
Sure.
You've always loved preventive and maintenance, right? You do, you like it.
Well, that was the only item on the agenda for tonight. There is a placeholder on here for executive session. So if the board has a desire to adjourn to executive session into our regular meeting at seven, I have a couple of items that I could read into, or if you all would like to just take the last forty minutes or something else.
Did you check on the item that I had mentioned?
Yes.
Is that something we can put on the agenda?
On the agenda or?
Or in the executive session?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, I, I will motion to, well, let me, you go through the O R C stuff here.
Yes.
So the three, three executive session motions that I would recommend the board do would be to go into executive session in a quarter, in accordance with Ohio Revised Code one twenty-one point two-two G eight to consider confidential information related to specific business strategy and to discuss negotiations with other political subdivisions requesting, respecting or request for economic development assistance. In accordance with G four, to discuss collective bargaining sessions. And in accordance with G three, to discuss pending or imminent litigation.
And I motion, we go into executive session for those items as detailed by Administrator Weckbach?
And I'll second that.
Okay, we adjourn at what time is it? Oh, sorry, sorry, for a vote.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Okay.
We should be back right around seven for the meeting.
So we're adjourning at six eighteen per mic clock and we'll be back at seven. Okay, it's seven o'clock. We are going to open the meeting, but first we're going to close the special meeting. And we got to take roll call.
Ms. Orich?
Here.
Mr. Unger?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Here.
Okay, so we now open.
Was there anything to report from executive session?
Executive meeting.
There was none.
And I motion that we adjourn the special meeting of the Board of Trustees at, the special meeting that started at six. I motion, we adjourn that at seven.
I'll second that.
No discussion?
None.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Okay, now we. Okay, now we're going to open the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees and we will stand for the pledge allegiance. Oh, sorry, we're, I'll call first. We just, he said to.
To put it in a minute, you should do a roll call.
Okay, so we do a roll call again.
Ms. Orich?
Here.
Mr. Unger?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Present.
Now pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And for a moment of silence, let's, since it's Valentine's Day, Happy Valentine's Day and hope everybody has happy hearts today. Okay, the first item on the agenda is to approval of the minutes.
Thank you, board. You've been provided with the minutes from the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting and I would just ask for approval.
I motion that we approve the minutes from the January tenth, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
I'll second that.
There was one typo, Jeff, I sent that to you. Thank you for correcting that. No other comments from me.
None from me.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Okay, our first presentation is by Chief Cordy.
Evening, board.
Evening, chief.
All right, one of the, the fun parts of the job is get to swear in some new officers. So if, three of you, if you could just go ahead and come on up here and join me. All three officers are coming to you and to Colrain Township with prior law enforcement experience. Always a great thing. So here, we'll start with Travis that's in the middle. Travis grew up in Spring Row, Ohio and comes to us from German Town Police Department with two years of experience. Zach, tall one down there on the end. Zach Getz grew up in the city of Hamilton and comes to us from Dayton, Kentucky Police Department. Was, held the rank of sergeant and has five years of experience. Part of that, two years of experience with Campbell County Detention Center. And Brandon Wilson here, grew up in the Cincinnati area and came to us from City of Woodlawn Police Department with five years of experience. And again, all three of these folks are coming to us with combined multiple years of experience, which is fantastic. So Brandon, if you want to first introduce your family. Sorry, this is going to take a minute, but.
A lot of people in the room.
I have a lot of people. So we'll start up front. That's my uncle Randy. That's Troy. Starting down here, this is my, one of my nephews.
Uh-oh.
This is my brother Brian. That's Leon. That's my sister Ashley, that's Layla. And Tanya, that's Jack. My little Sabrina. Down there, pretty much my brother-in-law Matthew. My son, Camden. Megan, my girlfriend. Her dad Scott. Her mom Carrie. Left is my son Oliver. And down here, all the rest of my kids too. Liam, Wyatt, Demi, and my little Liam.
Lot of happy faces.
All right, Travis, you brought a crew too, if you could introduce your family for me.
I have a couple, not quite everything. My cousin Kylie, my aunt Dottie, my dad Dave, our girlfriend Casey, my brother Greg, my mom Stacy.
All right, big guy, you're last.
It's going to be a lot easier. I've got my father Dave, my wife Desiree, my mother Angie, my sister-in-law Brooke, and my brother Alex.
DNA can't lie there.
All right, if you guys could have the three pinning your badges, go ahead and come on up here for me. We're going to stand right here.
I was going to say she can come up here, yeah. Thanks for a cuter picture.
All right, we good? You good there, Dad? All right, it's a little awkward with three of you here. You ready? Right here. I state your name. Do solemnly swear. Thou will uphold. The Constitution of the United States of America. The Constitution and State of Ohio. And its bylaws. Thou will abide by. The Corin Police Department. Mission and value statement. Code of Ethics. Rules and regulations. And police department policy procedure. I will faithfully discharge the duties. Of police officer. In and for Corin Township. Hamilton County. State of Ohio. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So be gone.
It's still, it's feedback still coming.
All right, we're good.
Thank you, gentlemen, welcome aboard, thank you so much for your service.
I was to say, yes, if you want to do the quick exit.
Chief? Good work.
Thank you all for coming and congratulations to your families.
Yes, they were getting feedback, I don't know whose mic it was. Okay, okay.
Please, turn it off and turn it on again.
Okay. Yeah, yeah. Okay, next on the agenda is the citizens' address. I have five, is there any more out there, is it, they're all here? Let me check, okay. You got them, okay, all right. First one up is Bruce. You got to turn it back on, Matt's advice is to turn it on and off.
Am I live?
Yes, you are, thank you, thanks for coming out this evening.
Thank you. Happy Valentine's Day to y'all.
Thank you.
First, want to agree to the moratorium. Should have a prohibition on the vaping shops. As I've testified before various boards before, it is a bad practice and over time, we'll get people involved in a habit that will cause pulmonary obliterans. So, thank you. The second falls around Matt. Wake up. And it has to do with the gun range. Saw your comments in the Inquirer and I agree with them, there's not much we can do about it. The plans that I saw a year ago, I think are good plans. But the real problem is, is we're taking the real issues of the traffic and whatever out here. Though I think the sound that the neighbors will hear will be a lot less than it is now. But the real problem as I see it is money.
Is what?
Money.
Okay.
If the Inquirer is right, and they may not be, they have twenty-one million dollars worth of, what do they call it?
Pledges.
Pledges, which may mean nothing. And Jeff and I have had a discussion about federal pledges may mean nothing because of possible clawbacks of funding with the new Congress. But even if you get twenty-one million, they're talking thirty, thirty-five million, which I think is low. So where the money's going to come from, we're going to break ground anyway. As usual, the city is dumping their liabilities off on the county and the townships. One of the things that's not in the article, and Matt, I don't know if you've ever addressed this or thought about it, there's another big issue out there with the gun range, has nothing to do with Corin Township. It really has to do with the cleanup of the Evendale site. And I brought this up to Vice Mayor Kearney during the meeting last year. How are you going to clean that up? Well, they think it's going to be easy. No. When I brought up, you can maybe get in for a low ball price of a quick and dirty cleanup for ten million. You're probably talking twenty, thirty to forty to fifty million dollars to clean up, depending upon the use of the site in the future. They have no money for that and guess where they're going to look for it? People in this room, the county. So something else for you to think about, Matt, and the rest of your trustees when you're interviewed. It's not paid for right now and how are you going to pay for the cleanup, which they're going to push off on the county? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Sean Spencer.
Happy Valentine's Day.
Good evening, thanks for coming out. I said, good evening, thanks for coming out.
Oh, thank you. I'm a local farmer and a business owner. Sorry, I'm not really an eloquent speaker, so I made some notes here. My wife and I grow fruits and vegetables, we use clean farming practices and we consider ourselves stewards of the land that we live on and work. We also pick up the trash that is thrown out by primarily Corin Township residents. They throw it out on the road and we clean up about eight to twelve hundred square foot, not square foot, but foot-long area along the road, and that's dangerous. We both do our best to help the community when we're able and time affords that. We don't receive pay or rewards for these efforts and we don't expect any. I'm going to do a little math. The EMS are emergency medical service workers, the folks who drive the ambulance and save lives, make an average of fourteen dollars an hour, which I think you guys are going to raise to sixteen dollars an hour. That brings that to approximately thirty-six thousand dollars a year. That's about forty percent lower than the average employed American earns in one of the worst medical jobs out there. There are two assistant administrators here that make a hundred and ten thousand dollars per year. That comes out to about fifty-two dollars an hour. The chief of police and the fire chief make fifty-seven dollars and twenty-two cents per hour, which comes out to approximately a hundred and nineteen thousand per year for saving lives, endangering their lives and keeping our township safe. In my opinion, that's not nearly enough, but that's what it is. The main administrator, Jeff, I think his name is, makes a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per year or approximately seventy-two hours, dollars an hour. Plus he gets five hundred dollars for car allowance and benefits. And that five hundred may be a month, I'm not certain. Please note that the average township administrator in Ohio is approximately seventy-eight thousand dollars a year. The three Board of Trustees make twenty-four thousand per year. I rounded that up for working or attending meetings an average of twelve hours per month. That's approximately one hundred and sixty-six dollars per hour. Add in the eight thousand dollars that Rumke gave each one of them and that comes out to two hundred and twenty-two dollars per hour plus insurance and retirement benefits. All of the employees mentioned above either receive specialized training or have worked from the bottom up in their fields. All three trustees are elected officials, some have experience and some do not. They were elected to do what they had made promises on, protecting the interest of the residents of Corin Township. One of the main promises they made when they ran was to address the overwhelming trash and litter problem that has plagued Corin Township for years. And it's an extremely important issue and easy issue to fix. Since they have been in office, they have put forth none or very little effort in upholding these promises. So in closing, we, the residents of Corin Township, are paying highly trained EMS workers sixteen fifty an hour to save lives. We're paying two assistant administrators fifty-two thousand or fifty-two dollars and the main administrator seventy-two hours. And we're paying the chief of police and fire department fifty-seven dollars an hour. And we are paying you three two hundred and twenty-two dollars an hour to do barely anything. And you live inside the township, most of the township employees do not. Some do not even live in Hamilton County. So why would they even care to clean up the county, community? They, it's just a paycheck to them. So you three are supposed to be looking out for our interest, y'all live here. You know we want a clean place to live and raise our families, not another dollar store, car wash or vape shop. Please either do what you promised to do, or if it's too much for you, then please resign so someone else can do it. We want to live in an open, we don't want to live in an open trash can any longer. Look at Wyoming, Springfield Township, Hyde Park, Madera. It's very easy for us to control that problem, just like them, there's trash all over the place. We are drowning in it, so please come down and put more than change in our cups. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Janet Guyer.
I'm coming because of the noise pollution or the noise that will be coming with the firing range on East Mamory River Road. The reason Evendale wants the firing range moved is the same reason I'm here. Had a problem with the noise years ago, had a police officer at my house who was amazed at the noise and how loud it is. Had a police officer at my house who was amazed at the noise, and how loud it is where I live on Dry Ridge Road, which is close to East Miami River Road, the end that I live on. And the noise from the range is bad, especially dawn practice at 5:00 AM with rapid gunfire going off, and the prac- day practice and dusk practice. You can't not have your windows open in the summertime. With 1,900 police officers, plus others from many other communities and that, that can be using the range, the range will be a lot of noise. New technology will not lower the noise enough, and with the estimated 2,000 using the range. I sent you all a letter, you know how I feel about it, and I'm not approving it at all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Right here, thank you. Thank you. Next is Rich McFay.
Good evening, board.
Good evening, thanks for coming out.
I need some help from you guys. You all have smartphones, don't you? Pull out your smartphones just for a second. You're not gonna get in trouble. Get your smartphone, and there's a calculator in there. You all know how to use the calculator, I think, your trustees. Nobody's reaching for the phone. Wanna reach for your phone? If you do, I want you to put something in the, in the numerator. In the numerator, I want you to put, uh, what the firehouse spends, uh, fire department spends each year. That's $14 million. And I want you to put in the denominator, how many runs we make every year. Now, in 2021, they spent about $14 million, and they made about $16,800 runs. You do the math, and that says every time we send out one of the red trucks, we're spending about $830 bucks a run, roughly. Now, you've got, you've got a resolution tonight that's gonna charge West College Hill $350 a run, when our residents are paying over 800. Doesn't make sense. Uh, you're charging Springfield Township $84,000 a year. I don't know how many times they run, uh, but I'm, my guess is that it's probably close to the same $350 per run that we're charging West College Hill. Doesn't make sense? The department is concerned about their six-minute runtime. I don't know why you guys are adding more work to our firefighters, especially when, uh, you're charging these two townships less than you're charging our own residents. Makes no sense. I wanna talk a little bit about some resolutions you have this evening to add some people to the payroll. Uh, addition of a community paramedic, addition of a planner, and then a change from, uh, administrator assistant to an EMS coordinator. The addition of a community paramedic, I don't know where you guys have got this from. I didn't think the township had a responsibility to provide medical services for the population. So I don't know where this i- idea came from, uh, and my guess is that the person will probably be making $100,000 a year when you put their benefits in, plus, uh, their own transportation. A planner will probably make 40 to 60,000 a year, and with their benefits, they are, they're approaching 100,000 as well, and if the course runs its normal, uh, chain, uh, chain of events, they'll get their own car and all that kinda stuff. In both these cases, uh, these are expenditures which, um, you don't have the funding for. So when you're making these decisions, uh, you are making the decision to raise taxes. I wanna be clear about that. You spent some time earlier tonight talking about the reserves you had, you want to put on the side, but these decisions that you're making, and I don't know whose recommendations you're following, um, but they are going to increase the tax base, uh, taxes on your residents in order to fund those positions. I'm not sure about the EMS coordinator to training role. That's just a person who's changing their role, but if they were in a role in the past, and they're now not gonna be in the role, so the real question is, does that job eventually have to be, uh, filled as well? So we have in the outset, maybe two for sure, maybe three positions that might be due, and when you roll them up, you know, it's, it's a $350,000 a year, $400,000 a year decision. Couple that with the fact that, uh, you probably have another, you've agreed to move forward with these, uh, two firehouses, and, um, that's, I guess, $800,000 a year indebtedness. Well, previously, uh, the firehouse was maybe 250,000 before it was paid off. So incrementally, we have another half a million dollars that we're gonna have to fund, okay? And as it now stands, as it now stands, you bring in $14 million in revenue, approximately, into the fire business, and you're spending $14 million in revenue. So all these decisions you're making, I want you to understand, okay? They aren't free. They're raising the taxes because essentially, you will run down the fund level, and you'll go back to the people and say, you know, "We can't keep these things running unless you give us more tax money." That's all I wanted to have here tonight, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, we have Stephanie Wright.
Good evening.
Good evening, thanks for coming in.
Obviously, happy Valentine's Day. Few things on the agenda tonight that I'd like to address. I'm very glad to see that, uh, we are increasing the hourly wage for the EMS and fire recruits. I think that $2 an hour is an attempt to make things better for them, but obviously, they could still afford to be paid more. Tonight, there are four bids, or excuse me, bids on here tonight for, um, different things that are happening in the township, and I was wondering if the township still abides by this campaign contribution affidavit in compliance with Ohio Revised Code. Uh, we've used this before. Our previous administrator said he thought it was a great idea, and I was wondering if this is still being used in the bid packets that are requested from people that are wanting to do, um, business with our township. In 2019, I, uh, sent an email to Mr. Unger about vacant commercial properties in the township. I have a copy of it here that I'd like to be put into the record. I'd like to know how many of those are still vacant, and how many of them actually have a vacant building maintenance license agreement on them. Two, I can tell you. And I'd like to know the status on the, um, cleaning person or company that we're using for the township. I believe back in December of '22, the gentleman retired, and I was wondering, uh, what the status is on that, if we've outsourced it, or if we've hired someone to complete that task. And then I had a question about the street sweeper. Um, in recent times, we have, um, leased that out to, I believe, North College Hill for them to use on their streets. And I was wondering if there's something, um, legally that says we can't use the street sweeper on our streets. I know township streets, county roads, and state highways are different things, I understand that, but is there some way that we can utilize something we have in our arsenal to clean our roads, whether it's county, state, or township? I'm just curious about it. Seems like it sets in a building awful lot and is not utilized. And then tonight with our vac- or, um, nuisance and abated properties, there's another long list, um, there, and most of them are repeat offenders. Seven of them are LLCs, and one of them is commercial. So, I'd really like to know why the list keeps growing and what the township is proactively doing about that. I understand the process, but last year, we had 184 resolutions passed for abated properties, and only 23 were actually recorded through the county auditor's site for payment, for reimbursement. Um, the company that represents our township with, uh, handling the abatement, uh, cutting grass and things like this, is not doing us any favors. They're very lackadaisical in reporting bills, so they're not done in a timely manner, and I think there is a huge gap in between what is being abated, assessed, and actually charged, and I'd like for you all to look into that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, was there any more that I didn't get? Mr. Wetbuck, is administrative reports?
Yes, so, uh, with this being the first and only meeting of the month, we'll start our administrative reports with department directors, and we'll start with the fire department with Chief Alan Walls. As he's walking up, I'll, uh, let you all know that we're having an issue with our, uh, visual tool that we typically use, so we're not gonna have that tonight for, for view, for, uh, data points.
Good evening.
Good evening, chief.
Just wanna make sure I don't have just 40 seconds.
I'll give you more than that.
Happy Valentine's Day, everyone. Uh, for incident activity in January of 2023, we had 827 EMS incidents. We had 162 fire incidents. There were 48 responses into the contract area with Springfield Township. There was a fire in the 2700 block of Burnside that was a $60,000 loss. Another in the 10,800 block of Gosling, which was a $25,000 loss. Uh, we had a swift water rescue on the Whitewater River, and in fact, uh, the police and fire department are engaged in a water rescue recovery right now in the north part of the township, uh, off a stone mill. Our property value loss was 85,600 dollars, and value saved was 172,740, for a 67% save rate. Our first response time for arrival of the first unit was five minutes and eight seconds, and first unit on the scene, less than six minutes, was 70.5%. And that's my administrative report, unless anybody has any questions.
Sure. Hey, chief, um, obviously, Corrine Township has a lot of contiguous neighbors such as Green Township, Ross Township, Springfield Township, Mount Health, the city of Cincinnati. Uh, we get a lot of runs that are right along those areas around the border. When Green comes into Corrine to help us, do they bill us? Do we bill them? Is it all shared services?
Nope, it's called automatic or mutual aid. And so, it's a collaborative approach, it's a shared services, um, type thing, for the lack of a better way to put it. Uh, our residents benefit if a Green Township fire truck gets there first, right?
Right.
Um, likewise, their residents benefit if it happened to be ours that got there first. And so, I think as the fire chief in Corrine Township, to, to say that the color of a fire truck or an ambulance shouldn't make a difference sometimes in response time, would be short-sighted. Um, an example would be Interstate 74. It takes us 11 minutes sometimes to get to Interstate 74, 11 minutes. Engine 105, ALS 105 from Whitewater Township in the Western Joint Ambulance District can be there in four to six minutes. I think anybody would say they would prefer to have a four to six minute response time than an 11 minute response time. Hence, we use them from an automatic aid standpoint, so they can get there quicker to triage the patient, stabilize the incident, and we can come in behind them and, and help wrap things up.
So, and where I'm going with that is, is one of the previous comments was, we're going to enter into an agreement where we would bill, uh, a neighboring area for the runs there. A lot of times, we don't get billed, and sometimes we do, and I imagine you arrived at that figure through...
Yep. So, um, the average time on an incident in Springfield Township is 20 minutes. That includes being dispatched, responding to, treating the patient, their ambulance transports, and us coming back to the fire station, 20 minutes. So, that dollar amount of $350 for West College Hill, if you take that 800 and divided by three, it's roughly, uh, I don't have my smartphone with me. $350 bucks, so...
But I just, yeah, that came up as a question. I figured you had a good answer for it, so...
Right. Um, I, I don't believe that we're a for-profit agency. I believe that we should be in the business of cost recovery, and that's what we're doing. We're recovering our, our cost for that incident. In addition, you know, that resident, albeit a Springfield Township resident, benefits with a four to six minute response time from us that we bill for, and it takes them eight to 10 minutes to get there. Works for them, works for us, we recover some cost.
Thank you.
So you said it, you are charging them $250 for 20 minutes.
So it's, it's $350.
350, so it's, it's over $1,100. And Mr. Mc, the citizen that spoke was saying it was $800 per Corrine Township resident, so we are paying less.
So if you take the...
350 times.
So Alan, maybe to help elaborate here, a typical run, you're probably gonna have the medic, for example, out of commission for roughly an hour with transport to the hospital and everything involved.
Okay.
Now, if we go automatic aid into, say, Whitewater Township with our ambulance, we bill for that from an EMS billing standpoint, so it's not necessarily free.
And that's a bill to the individual that we treated, not to the community.
That's correct.
Right, and I, and what's coming up on the agenda would be for, from now until December 31st of this year. It's just the, this year agreement.
For West College Hill, which is a temporary agreement to see if it works for them or not works for us.
Chief, I'm gonna throw you under the bus a little bit here.
Sure.
We've talked about this at length, when I was first elected, and I drove myself crazy trying to come up with a number that a fire run costs, and, um, you told me it was undoable. Uh, the former chief said it was undoable. I went to other chiefs that said it was undoable because all these runs are different. Uh, what is a fixed cost and what's variable cost for your department?
So, a fixed cost would be, um, and I figured this would come up, do you mind if I grab a couple things over there?
Sure.
Cause I brought some data.
Okay, and why you're getting your data, one of the runs, their guys stayed with friends that died on Christmas Eve. They stayed there two hours. So, the compassionate that those people showed cannot be...
Right, I'm, I'm...
So, that's another thing about a run.
I get, I got you. And I'm not trying to reduce it to dollars and cents, but from an economic point of view, I, I am.
Right, I mean, I understand that.
So, we talk about calculating cost recovery. There are things like a FEMA scheduled equipment rates that we can refer to. So an example would be for a fire truck, 1,250 GPM pump, uh, 500 gallon tank, $75.61 an hour. Or if we went to a fire engine type 1,000 gallon per minute pump, 300 gallon tank, pump and rule 14196. So we can refer to FEMA equipment rates to help calculate some things. In addition, personnel costs, well, that's relatively simple. Go to our contract, um, I, I looked at the highest rates. So for that fire truck to go over there, it's $31.36, times two, plus 34.51, which is $97.23. Average incident is 20 minutes, you divide that by .33. You take that 14196, and you come up with a total cost of 144.55, and we're billing $350.
But as far as fixed versus, and, and again, I'm gonna use you as an example, no offense, but whether we have 100 runs or one run, we still need a chief. And that's, that's a cost that, that the run amounts don't, don't really count into, or the equipment that we have. We, we need, we need engines whether we have zero fires, because it's a preventative cost anyway, right?
So you could have a budget of $15 million and make one run, and you could say that run costs $15 million.
$15 million, that's right.
Or you could have a $15 million budget and make, you know, a million runs.
Yeah.
And I think to channel my, my economics background, uh, it's hard to say that any of our costs are really variable, because we don't necessarily see huge increases in costs, like we're saying, for 15,000 runs, and huge decreases in costs for, say, 10 runs, uh, because we're not making widgets, we're responding as needed.
Right, it's $74 per hour, or whatever it was that the chief indicated.
Right.
Uh, and the last thing I wanna just broach on for a second because it did come up, is the idea of community paramedicine. And, um, I, I, I would say, um, for good or for bad, I have championed this from the very beginning. Uh, Chief Mueller's championed this from the very beginning. I know at the, the state level, they're very excited to see what we do with this, uh, and I know it, um, it, it levels, at corporate levels from hospitals are very excited too, which may...
Explain to the public what...
Yeah, so I'm, I'm prefacing this. So, if you could talk about what's meant by community paramedicine, and how this is really actually, uh, this is an effort to get in front of cost increase and actually presents a savings, uh, maybe you could cite what we did with the falls.
So, let's just use falls, for instance. Falls are, you know, a huge cost financially in terms of medical care. And therefore, if we can prevent readmissions by, on the front end, proactively addressing the cost for those, hence... the cost for those, hence with a community paramedic, then it prevents those readmissions. In addition, it reduces healthcare costs. It reduces the number of incident responses that we have for that. And you could, it could be falls, it could be a patient who has CHF, it could be a diabetic. And so you could, you know, put any number of things into, into lanes. And if we get out ahead of it, then once again, it reduces healthcare costs, it reduces responses, and there's a number of advantageous things to it, you know, as we've heard for the last, I don't know, three or four months, you know, we need to rethink EMS. That's exactly what we're doing. We're rethinking EMS.
And so to explain, our guys are going out and checking on these falls and our diabetes people and things that you have had multiple calls on and checking on them.
For example, I think two years ago, sixty-eight percent of our really high, high priority calls were falls. It was some kind of very high percentage like that. And we found that if we went out into people's homes and said, hey, I know that pot has been on that shelf for thirty-seven years, but if you move it down here, you've now reduced, now you reduce your chance for a fall, which reduces the number of times that we respond. Not that we don't want to respond, it's just that we want to reduce those calls. And, and I would suggest that if we spend, if we sit up here and spend the next, or whoever follows us the next eight to ten to twenty years, trying to keep up with police and fire and EMS calls, we're not going to win that game. It's just not sustainable, that we need to figure out ways to, to, as you said, rethink it or get in front of it. And I think that this community paramedic, we have the data that says it worked for us last time.
Right. And likewise, to adjust the EMS coordinator position, that's a job specific change, there's no need to fill that training administrative role. With our executive assistant, they're taking over those responsibilities. So we're not adding to the budget with this EMS coordinator position. It's basically a budget neutral position, and we're taking Jennifer and making her the EMS coordinator.
Okay.
So there's, there's no position that has to be filled with her moving over.
And to give folks the context of this, when Chief and I talked about the, the new, the new firehouses, I said, I need some cuts somewhere. And one of these cuts was the maneuverability in, of, of that office and saving money on that end. Because I said, look, I need something, I need something from you. We need to prioritize because we don't have a dollar for every need.
Right.
And, and you guys have done that, and I appreciate that.
And once again, we're rethinking EMS. Where do we have that at? I have it in the strategic plan that I have over there in terms of what we're doing with the evaluation of EMS, of, of fire, of technical rescue incidents, and so on and so forth. And so if anybody's wondering, well, where did they come up with this at? It's in our five-year strategic plan.
And not to keep you up here any longer than necessary, but I'll say this about all the department heads, and I don't know our average citizen realizes, the level of education that they have and the level of commitment to their craft and getting better. You got, every department is constantly doing that. And I, you know, I think that's something Mr. Mills pushed, Mr. Wetback pushed, and, you know, you guys are always in classes. You're never done, you're never going to be done being students.
I don't like to stand up here and talk about me. I, I don't, because I'm not the important person at the fire department, the important persons right now, or up in Stone Mill Road, trying to do a recovery. However, I've been fortunate and privileged to be a part of this township to where, when I came here, I already had my bachelor's degree. I was allowed to go to the Executive Fire Officer Program at the National Fire Academy and become an Executive Fire Officer Program graduate. I received my master's degree in organizational leadership. I've attended countless, you know, training programs over the course of my career. And so, you know, it humbles me and it's a privilege to, to be able to, to do all of that and be a part of this organization. So you're absolutely right. It's, you know, being a firefighter anymore, it requires a lot of training and education. I'll just leave it at that.
And you are not a forty-hour employee. I see you way more than, so that is not a budgetary item on that man's agenda.
I've heard more than once at home from my wife, could I just put my phone down for a few minutes?
Yes.
And, well...
You won't answer it when I call you at odd hours either then?
Let's put it this way, I'm the, I'm the fire chief here, but I'm not the fire chief at home. I'll just leave it at that.
Thank you so much, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, next up, we've got Chief Cordy with the Police Department.
Chief, we told you about those drones. Now they're shooting them down off Lake Erie and...
Are those yours?
I don't know.
They're balloons or something.
We're not exactly sure yet, right?
Yeah, I don't think we'll ever know.
I'm with you on that. So January, the Police Department, we responded to three thousand five hundred and seventy-three calls for service, which is oddly a decrease, two percent. We are still averaging a hundred and fifteen calls per service, for service per day. We're responding to all emergency calls within two minutes and fifty-nine seconds, so underneath three, well within our goal of four minutes. For the month, we conducted a hundred and sixty traffic stops, made six OVI arrests, a hundred and fifty-one arrests, and only had one use of force, which was an usage of OC spray. During the month, no traffic pursuits, one internal investigation. There was a question from a prior meeting that was asked about, and I talked with, right about it already before the meeting, about nuisance abated properties and the fees that are assessed by Hamilton County Auditors. We're abating what we have. The bills that we have, the bills that we received, we're paying them and we're getting them abated. There is a question, is, it's a valid question, is maybe we should be looking for another offender? And I think that's something that we'll, we'll look into. So there's obviously a communication breakdown that's going on, but it's oddly not on our end. It's kind of weird to even have to sit here and say out loud that we're asking this person to give us the invoices, but that's where we're at. So can't have him, he can't, I can't give him the bills quicker. No way around it. So we have abated what we have, but that's what we have so far. So jumping into code enforcement, I know we like handouts.
Sorry, Mr. Baker.
Thank you, since we don't have our visual screen up.
From back.
Thank you, Chief.
So just going to highlight a couple of different areas that's, that's important here. There's a lot more data on here. I keep asking them to add more and more to this, so they're doing a great job on that. But just to highlight some of the code enforcement, we've had a total violations of a hundred and thirty-seven for January. We inspected two hundred and twenty-seven. We closed seventy-five violations, three of which were, the violations were referred to housing court. We had twenty-seven total property maintenance violations, two zoning violations. Officer Boyd Henry, some of the things that he really kind of focuses on for us, he engaged in ten litter investigations, went after twenty-two abandoned vehicles, seventeen parking plates, interacted with nine solicitors, those are the ones that are on the side of the interstates, and communicated with the public on thirty-six different occasions. Not sure honestly how he has time to do what he actually does. Just a little bit, take a second to reflect upon the Police Department, where we are from, for the, for the year so far in twenty twenty-three. So with tonight's consent items, we will be at fifty-seven officers, which is the highest we've ever been as a Police Department. Up until this point, documented, I believe the highest we ever were was fifty-four. Obviously, as you know, we're still looking for ten more. We have the, slated to go up to sixty-seven. We're still, we're swinging. We're, we're doing fairly well so far. We've, when I took over in September, we were at forty-nine, and we're already up to fifty-seven. Nothing to do with me. That is one hundred percent upon the hiring guys that are out there, and it's going to be, I'll gladly give every part of this to them, and that's going to be led by Lieutenant Dorfline, Dean Dorfline, Sergeant Jake McGelvogue, and Alex Malloy. Jake and Alex are absolutely crushing this and running forward with it. And Dean's going to, to the point that he's going to start taking it a little bit back from them because I don't know that they're not here every day. But they've taken it so much upon themselves and they're, they're doing a great job and has really helped us. So to be able to articulate what I'm saying, for twenty twenty-three, the application process so far, this is with MOU information in place, and the things that Helen was able to help us create and push out, eighty-one applications this year, fifty of which have already been worked through and have been removed from our hiring process. Twenty-four are actively still being worked, and we are hiring seven. We've hired seven so far out of that group. Last thing to mention just is the, we have Bunko this week, this weekend on Saturday. It's going to be up at the Senior Sever Center from seven PM to eleven PM, ten dollars a person. It's a fundraiser for the Police Department, so if anybody's looking for something to do on Saturday night, please join us.
Thank you.
Don't go yet, Chief.
I was about to, I was about to walk away.
Yeah, I know.
Bunko is you throw three dice. It's not hard. Three dice, Ryan won, three dice, it's just really easy.
Yeah, I don't know. I don't know how to play it.
You're not playing it?
I will play it.
Okay. Round one, you count how many ones you throw on a dice.
I figured out.
Really hard. But I do want to acknowledge the police and fire for the diligence that it does take to bring quality individuals here. We saw the three recruits, we have six do hires. It takes a lot in this world to get good people, and I can't thank you both enough for all the, the background checks, all the research you do to get the best of the best to work for us. And it is hard, you know, these young men come up here and they're devoting our lives, their lives to our safety. So thank you, both of you. Chief over there.
I will tell you that it, it is, there's quite a few steps forward and quite a few steps back. We've had two folks that we're really excited about and we're looking to add to the March Agenda that unfortunately we've removed from our process.
Right.
That's the nature of the beast because that's how thorough a process that we go through. I will tell you, just like Alan is, when you're Corrane Township, you tend to be the cream of the crop when it comes to headhunting from different departments. Why would you not want, why would you not want our experience? For what we teach, what we train, and the experience that our officers and firefighters and paramedics go through, why would you not want to do this? What they're doing right now, as Alan referred to up on Stone Mill, you're not going to get that kind of experience in very many places.
Mm-mm.
So, I mean, there, there is a lot to it, so it's, we've been very fortunate in the last few months ourselves.
Can you reiterate our conversation about the mentality of the men since we gave them...
So it...
The race?
Without trying to sound like it's bragging, that's the hard part. The things that have been shared with me is that it's a different Police Department. The mentality is completely just different. I've probably seen the happiest group of people I've seen in a very long time.
So a lot of positivity.
It's, it's, and it's nothing against the prior, it's just everyone understands that sometimes we need to shake it up and change things up a little bit, and that's, that's how you not let things settle, so.
We're moving forward.
That's right, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I too want to thank you, the three individuals you brought in today that hired, you hired tremendous. I made it very clear that we're going to be a bulwark to crime here in Corrane because it's, just turn on the news, man, and it's, it's everywhere. And we're going to pay our guys commensurate, or try to. And, you know, I, I think I told, told my, this meeting a couple months ago, I went to three roll calls when this was first starting. And I don't get scared speaking in front of people, I've been doing it my entire life. I was scared, speaking in front of three roll calls, because I had a sense that, of where their, kind of where their morale was, and I, and I knew it wasn't good. And, and I'm just so happy to see, it, it seems like a different force. It, it really does, and I'm thankful for that. And you guys just keep it up. I, I appreciate it, and we're going to keep targeting crime and this is, and people have, I think, lost their minds when it comes to what they can do. I, I mean, they read it on TikTok and they're going to go do it. And, and, and it's just incredible what people will, will do now to, to be on social media and they'll commit crimes and things like that, and we're going to stop it as much as we can here. The other thing, and I don't know if I should mention this, but I ask you on a hunch to pull some data. Can we go there on a certain location? Or should we hold that back?
I think we should probably not, yeah.
That was sketchy, but we'll just, yeah, I don't want to ruin anything, so.
I know what you're talking about.
Yeah, I know, yeah, that's, okay. But thank you so much. The part that was sketchy, we'll be more here about that.
Absolutely, in the future.
Yeah.
All right. I'll be back.
I'll be back.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, the next department up will be Public Services, and Assistant Administrator Mays will be presenting that.
A little bit shorter than Alan.
No way.
Just the last order. All right, good evening, happy Valentine's Day.
You too.
Just a few updates from Public Services. The Pippin Road sidewalk project, right now, we are in the middle of securing right-of-way acquisitions, so we've picked our real estate consultant to help us with that. It's slated to get those acquisitions finished by June, so we should start seeing some work midsummer on that project. So I know that's near and dear to Mr. Waller's heart, and we'll get going on that one. The Colrain Road US twenty-seven bus stop project, we had a pre-construction meeting two weeks ago, and we have a tentative timeline from the contractor that he'll start work March first. We don't have a solid timeline, but that's, that's what he's proposing. So once that gets announced for sure in stone, we'll make sure we communicate that with the community because that's a main thoroughfare, so.
Did they say which, where they're going to start first?
They'll start the southbound side and then we're... Yes, yep. So, obviously, we're going to try to limit our disruption to traffic, but it's a big project, so we'll see how that goes. The Phase Three Playground, we're, we'll be talking about that more in, in new business, so that's in the works. We did meet with the contractor today to discuss some options, but I think what we'll find in new business is everything, the price of everything is going up, even eggs, if you haven't noticed in the last five weeks, that's even gone up, so we'll get to that. The last thing, which is really, really exciting, our summer concert, concert series has been scheduled. I make it a practice not to fully announce those until we get our contracts back, but it's an exciting lineup. Debbie Potzner did a really good job with lining some good acts up, so.
Can we say anything about the Fourth of July?
Uh, I don't think we have that contract yet.
Okay, we don't have it yet, okay.
I don't think so.
But we'll be having the fireworks on July third.
The fireworks are in July third. Big band may be coming.
Bruce Springsteen?
No.
Steve Springsteen.
For those of you that don't know, Stephen Springsteen is an employee of our office.
That's all I have.
Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you.
All right, up next, from the Development Department, we have Director Miller.
Good evening, Board. Wanted to answer one of the questions that came up last month in regards to portable on-demand containers and roll-off bins. And so those are classified in our zoning resolution as temporary storage containers, page two hundred and twenty-six of our resolution. They're found throughout the resolution as temporary storage containers as well, referenced in section ten point four of the code. And it says, "The storage or refuge container shall only be permitted for a period not to exceed two weeks unless otherwise authorized by BZA." So, yes, they're permitted, yes, there's a time limit, they have to get permission to do that, so it's something that can, can go beyond the time limit that's been allowed, and those are times that we appreciate help from residents, our neighbors, and they can be unsightly, there's no doubt, but they, they are a needed piece of construction when you have work that's going on in the house, and so that is what the portable on-demand are. Just from a Development Department, there, there's a lot going on. I, I think I started the year off by just enumerating the strategic initiatives that we have rolled out, and we're just about done with all of our initiatives and detailing everything that we're going to do this year. And I, I would be remiss to say that the mall, I think, is probably our, our most important economic development asset, I think, is the center of the township. And so we have a, a very keen interest in its status. We have had a number of reports about some infrastructure in the right-of-way that's been failing, and we have issued notices of violation on those. And so the mall management and ownership knows about that, and they're planning to get those fixed, but they are pedestrian and traffic hazards. They're, they are very serious. And so those are, you know, kind of the first, first couple of items that we have been able to, to work with them on, and they are concerned about it as well. And so, again, the mall is a, is a priority. And so, the, again, the mall is a, is a priority. Uh, it's a complicated equation when you are, are able to generate a revenue stream off a part of the mall where others are vacant, like the, uh, old Sears building. Uh, Macy's has got, uh, something in it that's less than desirable. But, you know, it's the mall management, uh, and the relationship we can have with them and how we can build a relationship to the, uh, principal owner. And that's what we've been working on is just trying to find, uh, what he wants to do and direction he wants to go with that. So, that's gonna be a, a priority this year, just continuing that line of communication, figure out how we can work together to move it forward to where it's a, a much higher and better use. A couple of other items I just wanted to mention. Our rental registration that, uh, Police Department's gonna be running point on, uh, is gonna be a companion to our nuisance resolution implementation. So, those two things together, I think, are gonna, uh, be a tool that we can use to raise the standard in our neighborhoods, particularly on rental properties. When the, you have a, an absentee landlord, that's often the problem that we find with those. And so, we, we think those are gonna be good tools for us. Uh, the Business Improvement District is, uh, moving forward this year. I, I'm excited particularly about a couple of roundtables that we're gonna put together with real estate, uh, agents and companies in Colrain and then, uh, key businesses. And we just want to sit down and hear them and find out, you know, what they're thinking. What can we do to help you? How can we be a partner with you? What do you see as lacking in Colrain? And how can we move, uh, economic development forward to be a, a complement to what they're doing? So, those are, those are a couple of things that we're working on. Uh, again, the zoning resolution is a massive undertaking, uh, complete rewrite of it. Uh, the last one was '06. Uh, and so, we have a, a comprehensive plan that was done in 2021. And what we're gonna do now is align the zoning resolution with it so that we can hopefully have the, the zoning to accomplish what is in that comprehensive plan. So, we're excited about that. That's gonna be, uh, a, a, uh, very difficult lift this year. Lot of tedious work. We have a great team that we are working with that we've hired. And we hope to be done by the end of the year. It might be early in 2024. But, uh, I think it'll be a great product when we get it done. Uh, we have a, a few applications for facade improvements. And so, that's exciting. We're, uh, going through their apps and gonna be meeting with them and hopefully, we're gonna be able to see some improvement of facades. Right? Facade improvement.
Yeah. My little new thing.
We're gonna, uh, I, I think our zoning administrator's gonna be able to complete an analysis of sites throughout the township that are prime for, uh, residential or commercial development. Uh, he can do that, uh, with some programs and, uh, easily, you know, analyze those. And I think that's gonna be something that we'll be able to, uh, use to share. We, we, we get inquiries all the time from developers, uh, businesses that say, "We'd like to be in Colrain. What do you have?" And so, this is gonna be a tool, some data that we'll be able to provide to them. So, I think that's probably, uh, as much as I can, uh, give you on the Development Department. Any questions that I could answer for you?
I just want to thank you because I've been out on a couple of site visits with you and I appreciate all the endeavors that you are trying to bring to Colrain Township with different businesses.
I appreciate your interest.
I commend you. I really do.
It's, it's helpful to have your input and it, there are projects that, that, you know, you can generate some excitement on, but, you know, it, it takes money.
Right. And you're thinking outside the box. And I'm loving it. So.
You really do. You have to think. And so, you know, there's opportunities there if we can just get those, get the ball moved down the field.
And then, we find out when the opening date is the, the sports bar? They get a soft opening?
No, I, I did stop in there. They had a, uh, a soft opening on Super Bowl night. Uh, and then on Monday, uh, I, I just dropped by and they were in there, uh, I guess sweeping up glitter, uh, confetti. Uh, they are, they still have a little bit of work to do and, and so, I think they're, they're not ready to, to go to open. And they, they didn't make anything definitive on when they're gonna open.
Just want to promote a new business.
Yeah.
I had just two things. Um, when, when Jeff Weckback took over, uh, one of the things I really, really stressed and you guys are doing great is that I want to see, uh, movement every week in the mall. I don't want to sit back and wait for things to happen and, and you guys are doing that. That's great. And we have the, the brain trust to do that and I, I thank you for that. Uh, the other, I have a lead for you. So, Ford's Garage just opened in Norwood and they want-
One place.
What's, they want to open three places in the, in the Cincinnati area. Um, I don't know if, if, um, you've spoken to them or cold pitched them, but they want three more locations. And I think it would be perfect, uh, um, if you have a chance to see the Norwood one, um, I think it's Norwood. Um, it's a, for those that don't know, it's a restaurant that's car-themed, um, with Ford stuff. And I think it's, uh, I think that'd be a, a nice, uh, and, and they've said, they're open to come and and they want three more Cincinnati locations. So.
I'm, I'm game. Yeah.
We'll go hunting again. Let's go hunting.
So, thank you for everything.
Sure. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Board, for my administrative report. Uh, I wanted to respond to a few of the questions from the last meeting as well. Uh, there was a question about the rules that we use to govern our meetings and whether or not we use Robert's Rules of Order. Uh, to read from our rules that you all adopted, it says that the Board will follow Parliament, Parliamentary Procedure when conducting all regular and special meetings. The basic outline of such procedure is found in Robert's Rules of Order Newly Revised 12th Edition. However, the Board is not strictly bound to adhere to those rules of procedure. So, to clarify, generally speaking, yes, Robert's Rules are what we use to guide our meetings. However, you all do have some flexibility in that per your rules to change things as you go. Uh, there was a question regarding flex time as it relates to employees and whether or not there are policies that is actually spelled out in Policy 1.5 on our policy book available on our website, uh, which deals with work hours and, and pay schedule. There's a section specific to flex time. And then further, we have a policy, uh, in our work assignment policy, which is 1.33, which speaks a little more to flex time for department directors. Uh, vacation time was brought up and I know that we've spoken about that several times. But currently, the way vacation time operates in every department except for the Fire Department is that it is earned every paycheck. And so, we get, you know, whether it's three hours, four hours, six hours, depending on years of service, every paycheck. The Fire Department gets a, a, a dump of vacation hours per their CBA and that occurs on January 1st of each year to allow for seniority and vacation selections. There was a question about sales tax and yes, that bill that was brought in did have sales tax on it and that should not be there. So, we're gonna do what we can to fix that. Um, not sure how long that's going to take or if we will get a resolution to that. And then, the final question, there were several questions about Scott Solman's contract, which is, uh, available on our website for public review. Uh, so those were answers to some of the questions from the last meeting. Um, did want to highlight real quickly, this past weekend, we had an event that occurred at 4,300 Springdale Road called Kickoff to Kindness that happened on Super Bowl Sunday. Uh, we actually had a resident that brought in some cookies from that event, I believe, from their own, uh, care package that they were able to receive. And so, the whole hope with this event was that folks would receive some kits, some baking kits and other things so that they could spread kindness throughout their neighborhood by, say, baking cookies and giving it to a neighbor or, or whatever else that might be. Uh, as a reminder, this Friday is National Kindness Day. So, please go out and think about your neighbors and even if it's as simple as checking in and seeing how they're doing, that could be a kind act alone that makes us all feel a little better. Uh, some say it's as simple as smiling at someone to, to spread some joy and some cheer. So, encourage you all to do that. And then finally, just wanted to take a, a moment to express my sympathies and condolences to the City of Cincinnati. Uh, they, they lost a police officer this past weekend, which is heartbreaking. And, uh, from all of us in Colrain, I think we know how that feels. And so, I just wanted to share my sympathies toward them.
Oh, thank you.
Happy to answer any questions that you all have.
You have any questions?
Not at this time.
Okay. Then, since you've got a long one, do you want to go first for the trustee report?
Sure. I don't know that it's long. It's just written.
Okay. It's pages.
All right. Um, and, and this represents just my, my opinion and not, uh, administration here or, or, or others at Colrain or my, uh, two other trustees here. So, in place of a trustee report, I'd like to make a statement regarding Hamilton County's desire to construct a regional safety complex in Colrain Township on East Miami River Road. As many people know, the manner in which American government is constructed makes it very difficult for townships to tell counties what to do, counties to tell states and for states, uh, to tell the federal government. In addition, the property in question on East Miami Road is already owned by Hamilton County and currently serves as gun range. The other complication is that the county must continue to operate an outdoor range. An indoor range would fall short of their requirements. Now, as Hamilton County and the City of Cincinnati began to reach out regarding this new gun range, I immediately wanted to know the township's options in accepting or attempting to block such a project. After lengthy discussions with multiple sources, I found those options to be limited to nonexistent. It became crystal clear that most, the most optimal route would be to try to negotiate an outcome with Hamilton County and the City of Cincinnati that would accomplish two things. Number one, mitigate the noise levels that currently exist on that, uh, Hamilton County range on East Miami. And number two, provide a clear and measurable benefit for the residents of Colrain Township. The only real options we have in stopping or slowing such a project would really be the combined and cooperative weight of public opinion. That would be difficult, but not unprecedented. Um, you know, that, whereas the, the township can't tell the county what to do, ultimately, the people of the county are the, the boss for, are the county commissioners. I met with both city and county officials on many occasions and I turned my focus on actions that would meet the two goals I mentioned above. And, and I thought it would be helpful now, since it's been in the paper, for me to review progress towards those goals to date. First, the first thing, I made it very clear that whatever the county proposed, it needed to be more than a gun range. The idea of relocating the range as it currently exists in Lincoln Heights would not be acceptable. In addition, I had no interest in supporting an expansion of what we already have with the county facility on East Miami. Uh, ultimately, the county offered a $35 million regional safety complex, which is more than just a gun range. Next, the county plan would need to provide noise and environmental mitigation. Hamilton County assured the township a schedule of day hours, although we've not received this in, in writing yet, and no evening or early morning operating hours, which was a, is a significant problem in Lincoln Heights. The plans offered by the county also include bullet containment mechanisms is to not leave ordinance behind. For noise mitigation, the county plan show earthen berms, manufactured berms, impact berms and covered ballistic canopies. Those plans show an effort by the county to mitigate noise. However, I believe that Colrain still needs to verify the effectiveness of those efforts through independent experts. The next action would be community feedback and involvement. The city, uh, and county provided one town hall meeting last February under the belief that that was inadequate to provide a forum for resident concerns and that several more would be needed, uh, to be held and to allow a full range and open dialogue regarding the county's plans. And finally, I ask in every single meeting I had with the City of Cincinnati and Hamilton County leaders, what's in it for Colrain? The rural nature of Colrain Township does not make it the default location for all the county's problems and of all things for City of Cincinnati problems. I made it very clear, Colrain would need to receive measurable and specific benefits linked to solving what amounts to a 70-year problem. I said in every meeting, including the town hall meeting, "I'm willing to listen to any proposal, but it needs to be a net benefit to the citizens of Colrain." Um, in order to keep folks informed of where I stand on this issue this week, uh, it's not up and running yet, but I purchased the website, www dot what'sinitforcolrain.com. It's not active, but over the next days and weeks, I'll be updating it. It's to my thoughts and news on the project. But please, please keep in mind, these are my own thoughts and do not reflect the position of the township, township administration or other township elected officials. All that said, I was a bit surprised when both the county and the City of Cincinnati went public with the narrative that the project was in final stages and ready to break ground. I have and still do take the commissioners at their word when they told us, uh, nearly two years ago, "They will not go where they're not wanted." I believe the county has some work to do. As we sit now, in order for me to support this project, I find the following actions are still necessary. Number one, I've spoken about, Colrain needs to have independent experts review the facility plans, provide an analysis of noise and environmental mitigation strategies and their potential effectiveness. Number two, Colrain and the county need to agree on the location's rules, hours, days, et cetera. And those need to be clearly memorialized with policies in place to deal with compliance issues. We're not gonna get in a situation where I'm gonna ask Chief Cordy to go ticket other cops. The city and county, uh, number three, the city and county need to hold several more town meeting events with the township to inform as many possible stakeholders and to get as much feedback. Uh, number four, and this is really the only new thing that came out of what's, what came out of the, uh, the, the news story, is the city and county need to work with the township to create a list of frequently asked questions so that they could be prominently displayed on different websites posted so that citizens have a central place to go and say, "What will this look like? What will this look like? What's the impact of that?" And, and the last point, a discussion and negotiation must take place in order to provide an added value for residents of Colrain. I don't want to just be even on this. We're assuming a problem that's existed in the city and county for seven decades. That's worth something. We're not a dumping ground for anybody, everybody's problems. I'll be meeting with Cincinnati Hamilton County Representatives later this month to address these issues. I've already indicated, uh, some of this, uh, with, with some of those leaders. Um, based upon the history of the Lincoln Heights location, I believe these guidelines are fair and offer protection and an added value for Colrain Township that I find necessary to support the project. Please note, the only new, real new request is the FAQ system. It's my hope that we're gonna pursue this as partners, but just because the county owns the land, because the county typically trumps townships on policy issues and because a gun range currently exists at the East Miami Road location is not enough for me to abandon what I think is right for the people of Colrain. It's my hope that the fellow trustees and residents of Colrain Township will join me in requiring what I see as fair treatment by the county. Uh, we, we are not a dumping ground for everything that people don't want. And that is where I am on that. And I appreciate your time.
No more?
That's it.
Okay. You want to go next?
I don't care. You want to go?
Go ahead.
Thank you. A couple of things that were addressed and, and with respect to what Mr. Weckback said about the, uh, situation with the police officer in Cincinnati. You, you never know what is on somebody's mind or, or what they're going through. And, uh, something I've done in my personal life is I've got several people that I actually check on every day that are non-family members, just to make sure they're getting a call from somebody. And it's, it's folks that I know that are, that are out there on their own. And, uh, the, the sad thing that happened, it's, it's apparent that the officer that passed away in Cincinnati took her own life, which is the, the saddest of things. And so, I, I would challenge anybody in this room to pick one or two people that you know are on their own and just start checking on them a little bit and, and see what you can learn about that. Uh, the comments about Northgate Mall, it's been there a long time. I remember as a little kid, as a, as a lifelong resident here, going up and watching the construction of it. It is a privately owned piece of property and the, the group that owns that mall, this is not their worst performing property. It is about 30% occupied. And it'd be my desire that it would be much more occupied, but I don't know that brick and mortar malls are the, are the wave of the future. But I can, I can tell you this, if these three trustees decide what's going to go on that property, I guarantee you, we will make the wrong decision. It has got to be somewhat of a market-based decision. I will do what I can to get government out of the way, but, but we are not gonna make the right decision. Somebody that's, that's investigated it, is willing to make the investment and knows that they're gonna get a return on their investment, that's the person who's gonna decide what's going in that mall. Uh, there's been some comment about the, the police. I would contend that here in Colrain Township, we have the best police department. They don't have a whole lot of bureaucracy. Any bureaucracy at all is sitting right up here and these, these, uh, this gentleman over here. I trust Chief Cordy is doing the, the best he can with the great training that he's provided for the department. I have 110% confidence in our department. I will tell you this. If, if we start going another direction, you are going to have chaos, like you see just south of here in Cincinnati, like you see so many other places. What, what our police have up here is a board of trustees that, that supports them 110%, Chief. So, you know that. Um, we had a speaker earlier that talked about this being a 12-hour-a-month job, Matt. How about that? The, um, I've always, and people laugh at it, but, uh, my phone number, he asked about our smartphones, 513-404-3057. That was another speaker. It is not a 12-hour-a-month job. I get one to two calls a day by giving out that number. A lot of them I'm able to hand off. Uh, we have an employee in our police department who a lot of that goes to and his name is Officer Henry Boyd. And that guy is awesome. And he handles a lot more stuff than you're probably aware of. He is just out there. He's responsive, just like all the, all of our other men and women are. Uh, as far as the gun range, the situation in Lincoln Heights, and I remember going there as a little kid when it used to be open to the public and you could go in and shoot. Our Cub Scout group went in there. I'm well aware it's been there a lifetime also. You're getting a lot of report and echo of surrounding buildings and other areas and it wasn't really built for, for sound abatement or sound containment. The, the rough plans- The, the rough plans for this new facility have a lot of dirt berms and a lot of, a lot of ability to absorb some noise. Yes, I'm, I'm not an engineer, but I think the, the plans are that it's going to be less noisy. There's also two other, uh, organizations in the area, the Southern Ohio Dolgin Game Protective Association and the Fairfield Gun Club. And, and you will hear the report of, of gunfire and, and people practicing and exercising their Second Amendment rights down there. So, uh, firearm noises are nothing new to that area. I'm not interested in increasing the amount of noise and hopefully with some engineering, this new facility would be better than, than what's there right now, which doesn't have as much sound abatement as proposed for the new one. What other comments did I have? Somebody else commented about trash. We, we do have, what, three 20-hour employees that do nothing but go out and on assignment spot trash pickup. And with the, this board of trustees was able to get a pickup truck donated to the township just to get that program off the ground. And I would say three years into it, it's, it's probably gone pretty well. And if, and if anybody has an area, and I, there are folks here that, that do point out where trash is, and I do go out and look at it, um, you know, please, please report it, and our Public Works Department will try to get the crew scheduled into that area. Uh, none of us like having trash on the roads. Um, let's see, what else was here? I do take notes and I do write these things down, and, uh, the rest of these items are coming up on the agenda. So the last thing I will mention is it is Lent and a lot of our local churches have fish fries starting in about a week. So go out and get yourself some nice fish fry.
Oh, well, thank you.
Okay, Kathy, it's all yours.
Okay. Um, um, I, one of the comments I was going to make is I called Jeff last Monday. North Gate Mall looked horrible. Our labor litters had that cleaned up in no time. And we hired two last year, correct? One, the first...
Yeah, so, so two hirings to get us up to three.
Right. So just to reiterate to the public, we now have three this year. We did hire two, and I think our last, they had 650 bags of garbage they collected last year.
It was probably more than that.
I, I think I wrote, maybe, oh, that was the, uh, Corrine Township group. It's CCA did. Okay, so, right. So we are collecting a lot of garbage. And I've, I clean up my little area of Dry Ridge Road, and there's nothing more frustrating as to clean it up and then the same trash over and over. Just people, please stop littering and take respect for our neighborhoods. That's, I mean, there's nothing we can do about beer cans and pop cans and fast food on, in our yards. I mean, nobody wants to clean up other, I mean, even with COVID, who wants to clean up somebody else's straws? And, you know, I don't understand where we went with this. People have got to start being responsible for their own trash and stop putting in our yards. And I'm going to not comment too much on the gun range because I have to have my meeting with, uh, the commissioners, and I am bringing all our concerns of our citizens, um, about the sound barriers and everything else we can bring and, like you said, what we can get in return. So we still have those negotiations and talks to go through, uh, about that. And, um, the last meeting on the 10th, we had said we would answer all the questions that were asked, um, during the citizens' address. And we're doing that so we have the time to research and give you the proper information. And I think most of them, all the heads of the department, were answered the questions that were asked of them. I think, uh, Mr. McRave, you might have a few financial questions, but that's why we're doing it that way. And, um, and to everybody watching out there, if you do have concerns or questions, our department's heads have emails. You can ans, ask them, and they are available every Tuesday before trustee meeting from six to seven, if you want to meet with them one-on-one. And to, to go back to, I went to the OTA convention, which was a wonderful convention, um, about three weeks ago in Columbus, and talked about the citizens' address. And most citizens' address in the township are three minutes. We do give five minutes. And of those several townships, they only discuss on the agenda. So, you know, we do have more variance for our people, so I think that was nice to see. And also, I was made aware of our township, um, of our size, that record requests, there was maybe 11 at one, up to 70, and we had over 330. So I really want to take this time to thank Jeff Baker and every Corrine Township employee that takes the time for the overburdenous sum, sum of record requests we get. It is a long process, and I thank you all for taking care of that. And that's all.
All right. So next on the agenda is new business, and the first few items there are with the fire department, and Chief Allen Walls will be presenting those.
Chief, welcome, Matt.
Good evening once again, and thank you. Uh, first item tonight, I have a motion authorizing the township administrator to execute an agreement with Springfield Township to provide EMS services to the West College Hill and Gulfway area, and we recommend adoption of the motion. Uh, and just for transparency sake, that is a, um, trial period of the date that it's signed through December 31st of 2023.
Motion to authorize township administrator to execute an agreement with Springfield Township to provide EMS services to West College Hill and Gulfway area.
I will second it.
Uh, Chief, I voted no on this last time. Um, I had a long discussion with Mr. Weckbach, um, and, um, didn't have time to circle back with you the, the second time. Um, and, um, I'm thankful that this is kind of a trial period and, um, based on my discussion with Jeff, I, I, I'm, I'm going to support this just to see what it looks like. Uh, you can gain data out, but there's no replacing real-time data. And, um, and, and I rely on your, your opinion then at the end of this to say, was it good? Was it bad? Should we change it? Should we keep it the same? Um, and, and I trust you with that.
Thank you.
Any discussion?
It is, for those that don't know where Gulfway and, and where this area is, there is a, a map of it contained within the agenda, and it seems reasonable that we would serve that area part of. That's right, where Springfield Township and Corrine Township and, and North College Hill all come together at.
That's correct. So, uh, West College Hill will be kind of that Steel Sub area, Gulfway would be, um, off of Banning Road, um, Devlin, which is a township street, would take you back around that way.
It's a weird cut.
And if we were called to assist, we would go over there and, and not fill, or would we? I mean, previous to today?
Previous to today, if they called us, we would go.
Right. So this way, there's some cost recovery. Okay.
I think it's a program worth trying. Yep. Thank you.
So it's, it's not going to train, change our runs? We'll just get paid for it.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. Right.
Ms. Orge?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, next item is a motion authorizing the township administrator to execute an agreement with Springfield Township to provide EMS services to the Pleasant Run Farms area. Uh, this contract will run from the date that it's signed through December 31st, 2025, uh, at a cost of $84,000 a year. And once again, we recommend adoption of the motion.
A motion to authorize township administrator to execute an agreement with Springfield Township to provide EMS services to Pleasant Run Farms.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
So this is a little bit, a, a little bit of a different situation for me because, um, the West College Hill situation was always that it would probably come from Galbeth Road.
Correct.
Which is what, the third or fourth busiest house in the county, not the, not even the, yeah, not even the township. Uh, with this, uh, it, the Pleasant Run Station has a considerably lower, uh, call amount. And, um, this is an opportunity to, to help subsidize that through, through those. And, and there isn't, uh, whereas last time when I voted no in West College Hill, there was Cincinnati, North College Hill, there's, there's not a lot of options for Pleasant Run Farms.
Yeah, and just to be, um, once again transparent, so the West College Hill area, we're looking at about eight to 10 runs a month. That's it. Uh, the average over the last three years into Pleasant Run from Station 109 was about 33 runs a month, so one a day.
Thank you.
And if you look at item 18 under compensation, it shows we would receive a payment on February, on or about February 1st, May 1st, August 1st, and November 1st, and that'd be four payments of $21,000.
Correct.
That we would receive.
Right, right. And once again, what, it's not even, what, three miles from the Kemper, one, is that 109 to Pleasant Run Farms? You're right down on Kemper. It's, they're, like I said, if they needed us there, you would have been there to also.
So in fact, the intersection of Hamilton Avenue.
Right.
And Kemper Road to Springfield Township.
And, yeah.
Were two minutes from there.
Right.
Hence.
Right.
The, the contract and first response.
Right.
For EMS services.
And if Mr. Gilbert's watching, we, this goes to show that we can make things work. No other comments?
No other comments.
Ms. Orge?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Isn't that right, Jeff?
Well, I believe Springfield Township has their meetings tonight as well, so.
He probably watches ours. Ours are better. And theirs, theirs are half an hour, and they start at 5:30.
Yeah. Theirs are, theirs are, they're over, they're watching home in two.
But I do want to take a quick moment to thank Chief Walls for his assistance in negotiating these contracts with Springfield Township. I know he spent a decent amount of time working with their fire chief and then their public safety director to make sure we got the best and, and most fair contract for all parties.
And, and Chris Gilbert, if you're watching, thank you for, uh, working with us on this.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
And then last, uh, I have a motion authorizing a pay increase for, uh, Department of Fire and EMS recruits from 1450 an hour to 1650 per hour. Uh, we recommend adoption of that motion. Uh, once again, just to provide a little background, at the time that we brought the recruits on at 1450 an hour, we were in negotiations with the part-time bargaining unit, which they're not a part of. I didn't feel it would be appropriate to pay them more than those who have been trained, which their starting pay was 1494. Hence, with signing that bargaining agreement, the starting pay for firefighter EMTs, uh, is just shy of $17 an hour. Uh, these individuals are trained through our program, hence, uh, the increase of $2 an hour to 1650 per hour.
I'll motion to, uh, authorize pay increase for Department of Fire and EMS recruits to 1650 per hour.
I will second it.
Uh, Chief, um, how many hours? So, a couple, not to put you on the spot, how many hours? Is it 30 hours for a recruit? Or 40?
So the, the first six weeks, uh, they're basically working close to 40 hours a week uh, because they're in class every day. In addition, they're catch and runs on the apparatus. And then once they transition out of that, they go to every sixth day. So by the end of the year, then, we keep them under the 1,560 hours.
1,560.
Correct.
So an average of 40 hours a week is 2080, so you're real close to that 30.
So they end up right at bas, basically 29 hours.
How many are in this year's recruit class?
Uh, there are, so there were, um, I think 19. We had one that didn't complete EMT class.
And I understand a former student of mine.
Oh.
He completed it, right?
Yep.
You're not going to ask if he passed or failed?
No, I just want to know if he completed, because I'll hunt him down.
They, they have completed EMT class, and they moved on to their Fire One class. So this is actually something new for us to try. Summertime proves to be difficult for us staffing-wise. Uh, so we decided to try something different and get them done by the end of May, so they would be trained, certified, and, and ready to go, so that when vacation season hit, then we, we weren't, um, being overwhelmed with overtime.
Keep up the program.
Any discussion, Dan?
No, no more discussion.
Okay.
Ms. Orge?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
And that's all I have for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief.
All right, and the next dozen items, I believe, are the police department with Chief Ed Cordy.
Oh, gosh. He's ready for you, Matt. He's got a drink on, he's got a drink on this one.
I did count, I believe it is 12, so.
All right. Item D, we have the first reading for the drone policy. If I may, before we, uh, open it up here, just a little bit about the drone policy and what's going on here. Um, as you know, it's the first, uh, first reading. Policy would be named, uh, 6.62 with the police department, small unmanned aircraft systems, or S UAS. This policy was created as a first step of our drone program and developing and, and looking at what that would look like for us. Uh, there was a question directly asked about the costs of this. Uh, costs initially, uh, we would need to have per pilot training of $50, which is basically a, a prep test that, that the, uh, training that actually are called pilots, that the pilots would go through. The license is $175 per pilot, and then any of the call-outs that we would ever have for any on-duty or, or overtime costs. Mutual aid, there's a question about mutual aid, and if there's ways that we would be able to recoup any of that cost. Uh, just like with the fire department, uh, well, kind of like the fire department. Uh, mutual aid is if we, if we're asked or we, we, it's a give-and-take kind of situation where if we asked, um, Springfield Township to cover, we're going to also be covering them too. So, uh, mutual aid, everything would actually be covered underneath a mutual aid agreement that's been approved by the trustees, uh, Resolution 3010. Initial costs, the initial cost of the program, uh, we slated last year was $20,000. And a yearly cost to maintain the program would be at least $3,000, depending upon if we would continue to build the program or not. Uh, you might recall and remember a proposal that was made by Lieutenant Chris Phillips last year. At the end of 2022, this was init, initiative that we had, and we actually delayed it to this year because we wanted to work on the overall cost assessments, uh, develop a policy. Uh, and frankly, I wanted to see if it was something we even wanted to do. So where are we now? I assessed the costs. I spent quite a substantial amount of time developing a policy by grabbing policies throughout the entire country, looking at things that, um, frankly, a lot of departments had to deal with and what they've gone through. And, uh, taking the costs, the, the current economic climate that we have with, with inflation and everything into account, um, I'd like to put this aside to a possibility for 2024. Frankly, I'm not looking to move forward with this project in 2023. Uh, this is something that we, I would gladly humor any sort of conversation we have about this, but at this point, I am absolutely, uh, not looking to move forward with this. Uh, if there is some direction or some thoughts about this policy, I would gladly take that. Uh, but right now, I'm, I'm not looking to move forward with the program.
And, and for full transparency, to maybe elaborate a little bit on some of Ed's comments, uh, as we've had some renewals for things like our tasers and things like that, uh, the, we expected price increases, but the price increases were significantly more. And so when he and his team sat down to really dig in on, you know, where these dollars are best spent, I think that's what led to their recommendation for tabling or temporarily, uh, not moving forward with this item.
To be honest with you, this is something that could be absolutely beneficial, but there's also multiple drone programs for Hamilton County, and I can ask for help. I would much rather spend this, the funds and this type of money on the everyday things, such as specifically the TASER program and, and the contract that we're going to most likely have in front of you next, um, next meeting.
Well, evidently China has all kinds of balloons out there. We can just get the data from them.
What that, what that goes to show, Chief, is that you are a good listener. Um, the, um, I've not been in favor of it, period, for a lot of reasons. One is the citizen expectation of privacy, but with regards to having a policy on it, I, I think there should be something in there that we will not use it for zoning or code enforcement, because I just don't think that's the right way to go flying around over people's backyards to see what's, what's going on back there.
Violation of privacy. Violation of privacy. I agree.
Right, and, but it's not reflected in the, in the policy. Um, as far as the cost, there's the cost for the equipment, and then I, I think we're gonna get a lot of public information requests for people that request that video. So, we would have to have someone sit through with a video editing skill and, you know, video out or blackout any images or anything, and, and there's a cost with that. You know, we got to a point where we were getting so many public information requests that we had nobody answering the phone over at administration, and we ultimately hired another employee just to make sure the, the phone was getting answered. And, and for better or worse, I, I think the amount of public information requests we get for, for drone footage is, is a, we have to assign a dollar amount to that. And, and it's gonna be, it's not gonna be a small amount. It's just gonna take hours and hours to go through footage as people, as people request it. Um, I'm glad you did bring up the shared services, because that was a question I had asked Jeff Wackback a week ago during that twelve hours a month that I spent being a trustee. Sorry about that. But, um, I have quite a few conversations with Jeff on a variety of topics. And, um, the, the shared services, yeah, you're, you're absolutely right, and thank you for bringing it up. There are other departments that have them. And I realize it would make your job easier, but, but I'm, the side of it, of the expectation of privacy and the cost influences my decision a lot on it. So, I do appreciate you taking to heart the things I had to say about it.
Of course.
And you did do a lot of due diligence, because you wanted to see procedures and what we were gonna, you know, put in our books if we did adopt one of those. But also, we also had the discussion about the record requests, but we have body cam footage and we have car footage that are all.
Just body camera.
Spotting. So, we already have those kinds of.
Right. To, to dive into this, there's a little bit, um, there is software that's associated with Axon, which is the body camera.
Right.
Uh, there's actually something that's on the consent tonight that allows the, uh, their technology to be able to, uh, speed that process up. I will tell you that I've done this in the past myself, and just like everything else, it's all shot in four K, thirty frames per second. And when you have to go through every single frame per second, per minute, per hour that you're doing this, it's very cumbersome. And you're right, it would.
Right.
It's a person. It's a person just to do that as a full-time job. But the point being is, the video from the drone would not work with our current redaction software that we have.
Okay.
So, we do have software for that, but it's proprietary to Axon, and it would not be able to be used with that.
Okay. I had that discussion. Any other discussion?
Got nothing.
Okay. Oh, you've got nothing? Whoa.
Yeah, I have to go home and type something else out.
Okay. Mr. Baker? Do we have to vote? We don't have to vote on anything?
Nope.
Nope? Okay.
All right, on to me.
Yay. Moving right along.
All right, we have Resolution declaring nuisance and ordering abatement. Recommend adoption of the resolution. Resh now is, just allows for the ruiv on controlled vegetation and/or refuge for the following properties. I was also asked before this meeting to put these in alphabetical order, and I will try to do so next time. Thirty-four fifty-five Redskin Drive, ninety-one seventy-three Coogan Drive, ten one oh four Sturgeon Lane, twenty-seven sixteen Brampton Drive, twenty-five oh five Burnside Drive, thirty-two seventeen McGill Lane, twenty-four thirty Chopin Drive, ninety-one seventy-eight Orangewood Drive, twenty-seven thirteen Sandhurst Drive, twenty-six seventy-four Niagara Street, ninety-two ninety-five Coogan Drive, eighty-five thirty-two Sunlight Drive, twenty-six ten Sandhurst Drive, twenty-five eighty-eight West Galworth Road, eighty-eight seventy-six Planet Drive, seventy-three fourteen Bowlin Drive, and seventy-one twenty-seven Thompson Road.
I motion that we approve the Resolution declaring nuisance and ordering abatement.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
And with your, your question that somebody asked you about putting them in alphabetical order, I'm guessing the order they're in is the order that they were filed.
I mean, it's just.
That would just be an extra labor, time-consuming step to.
It's just the rope and golf, how, how they access the data.
Right, I'm fine with it the way it is. Um, whatever you decide to do is fine, but they're, they're probably in that order because that's how the system puts them out, so.
Yeah.
So, uh, from a general, it applies to this resolution, but the others as well. You indicated that there was some frustration with the vendor for that. Um, do we need to start looking?
Well, to be honest with you, that, there, there could be frustration with the bills, but there also is, this is just one of the steps. This is one of the, the, this is part of the whole process. So, while I just read all these off, if we go to abate and have this grass cut, uh, and it's cut, it does, you know, offsetting penalties. And we just start all over, just like the, the vehicles that we're gonna, the, the goal is to get compliance. So, I mean, they're, just because I read that off doesn't mean I'm gonna have a bill for every single one of these properties, and we're gonna abate every single one of them.
Right, right, right.
To answer your question from a vendor's standpoint, I think it was maybe in twenty eighteen or nineteen, uh, back when code enforcement was still under planning and zoning, we actually went out and did a formal bid, I believe, for this service. We got maybe two or three companies back. Um, this was not the first company that we, we had selected. It was a different one. That individual was very unreliable, for lack of a better term, would not show up when we called them out, that sort of thing. DNW Lawn and Landscape was the second highest on that list. I can't remember, but I want to say there was a decent gap in cost. Now, granted, in theory, we're passing these costs on when they get abated. Part of what's difficult in this abatement realm that we have found is that sometimes the properties are pretty disgusting when they go to abate them. And so, you, you turn off some of these companies. And so, um, I don't know if that's what's going on here or not. I haven't talked to the vendor or anything like that, but i- it's probably worth us just figuring out if, if it is, or if it's something that we need to have a rotation of several vendors and, um, you know, but, but if we have a rotation of several vendors, then that, what that means is then we've got to really check and see, okay, if we sign off vendor A and they charge a hundred dollars a yard and vendor B charges two hundred, well, that yard needs to now be charged four eighty-five instead of three eighty-five to make sure that we're recouping all of our costs. And so, then you might get into an issue with equity and somebody trying to say, well, you know, why'd you send vendor B to me and not vendor A? So, it can, it can get.
So, I, I guess my assumption was the bottleneck was occurring at, at the county level when they recorded some of these things.
So, there is something there too. So, the county, uh, only accepts, accepts assessments until September, typically September first of each year. So, you know, we can send more assessments down to them after September first. There's not necessarily an incentive on our part to do it, other than to just get it off our plates. In the past, and again, this is ebbed and flowed, so at one point, Chris Cavallaro, when he was still here, was sending them down just at one point of the year. He was sending them down in late August of every year. Then at another point, he was sending them down as soon as they came in. Um, and so, i- it's been a little haphazard. Uh, we've got some new folks in our code enforcement team, and Stan Schmal and Nick Hopewell. And so, I think they're, they're starting to learn the processes, learn how these things work, and come into their own on their preferred style for handling some of these.
So, we have a new county clerk courts. It might be a good opportunity for them to reach out and work together to see what the most optimal solution is, instead of it being kinda of.
Yeah, I think the auditor likes them all at one time. Uh, their preference has typically been that way, because they're preparing the tax bills at one point in the year. So, then they're not having to sit on something that we sent them and potentially forget about, um, putting something on a tax bill.
That, that's what, I'm sorry, I said.
The auditor.
Is that the new auditor's?
Yeah.
Still be the auditor's office and.
Right. Is that the new auditor's position as well? She's only been in the office, like.
It would still fall to, fall to her staff, yes.
I don't think she starts till.
April.
Started, I don't think she starts till April first.
Okay.
But it will be the new auditor's staff, and, and again, it's, uh, I, I would imagine that there's probably not gonna be too much of a change in staffing. So, a- at the lower levels, there may not be much of a change in preference.
And that's former state rep, uh, from Norwood, right, Bridget Kelly?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so I had some discussions with her about the office. I think she's, I think she's open to changing the process. You know, good or bad dusty roads, uh, down there a long time.
Yep.
I, I mean, I think it might be an opportunity for us to maybe put some input into how this is done and, and work out a solution with, uh, with, with the office.
Yeah, and, and, and my gut is just telling me that it's not gonna be too different, just because tax bills only go out at certain times of the year and, and probably their timeframe that they're using to prep them is not going to change.
But if it's listed, if it's listed on the property, um, it is a, um, a lien, right? Assessment, assessment early.
Yes.
Okay. So, and that, house sells.
Yep. And we've had that happen before, where we've sent a bill down to the auditor to put on somebody's property taxes. The house sells, new property owner gets this assessment, and then they come to us and they're, you know, asking us to not charge that fee. And, and historically, we've said no, because we did send our contractors out there. We did do all of this work. It's really unfortunate that that individual then had to pay this fee after the fact.
When the title company does do the title search, they do come up if it's posted, because.
Right, but he's talking about it only happening once a year.
It depends when it's posted.
Right.
When you close, the title exams. Go to the, yeah, county auditors to see if there's any, um, because all that's paid in, um.
I mean, we do get calls and questions from residents that are prospective home buyers, asking us if there have been any code enforcement issues on the property, and usually we provide answers that way. Um, but again, until that property tax bill goes out, it's probably not gonna show up on a title search. So, even if we send it down to them in January, if they're not gonna put it on the property tax bills until they go out in December, it's still, you're still gonna have that gap.
All right. I would think there'd be a better way.
No other discussion for me?
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution declaring a junk motor vehicle at twenty-five twenty Springdale Road. Recommend adoption of the resolution. Twenty-five twenty Springdale Road, it is a nineteen eighty-six red Chevrolet Camaro. Ohio license plate Mary sixty-five ninety seventy-six.
I motion that we approve the Resolution declaring the vehicle located at twenty-five twenty Springdale Road as a junk motor vehicle, uh, per the description of Chief Cordy.
Sorry, I'll second that.
No discussion.
No discussion.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
All right, next one. Resolution declaring a junk motor vehicle at thirty-one thirty Springdale Road. Uh, at that address, we have a nineteen ninety-nine white International forty-seven hundred with Ohio license plate Paul eighty-seven ninety-four fifty-four. Recommend adoption of the resolution.
I'll, uh, move for Resolution declaring a junk motor vehicle thirty-one thirty Springdale Road.
I will second it.
Mr. Baker? Any questions?
Nope.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Resolution declaring a junk motor vehicle at thirty-two eighty West Galworth Road. At that address, we have a two thousand and six white Ford F-one fifty with Ohio license plate of Henry Charles Paul eighty-seven forty-six. Recommend adoption of the resolution.
Motion, we approve the Resolution declaring the vehicle located at thirty-two eighty West Galworth Road as a junk vehicle, per the description of Chief Cordy.
Second.
And no discussion?
None.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Resolution declaring a junk motor vehicle at forty-six seventy-one Dry Ridge Road. At that address, we have a nineteen ninety-five white Mazda Miata with Ohio license plate Vanity of Slow Boy.
Thank God.
S L O B O one.
All right, I'll motion, uh.
Two vehicles here, sir.
Oh, sorry.
Uh, second vehicle is a two thousand and three cargo enclosed trailer with California plate for Edward John seventy-seven oh seven. Recommend adoption.
Motion to adopt the Resolution declaring junk motor vehicles at forty-six seventy-one Dry Ridge.
I will second it.
My discussion is, thank you.
And I've been out to look at that one also.
I see it.
Well, I mean, I've, that was a call-in from a citizen, and actually, there was something else out there that I think you already took care of, besides those two vehicles. No other, no other discussion for me.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
We're getting there. Three more. Resolution declaring a junk motor vehicle at seventy-two thirty-eight Bowlin Drive. At that address, we have a two thousand and six black Kia Spectra, oh, no Ohio plate. Recommend adoption.
I'll motion to a, to declare a junk motor vehicle on seventy-two thirty-eight Bowlin Drive.
I will second it.
Just discussion?
None.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
All right, Resolution declaring a junk motor vehicle at seventy-two fifty-six Bowlin Drive. At that address, we have a two thousand and five gold GMC Yukon, Ohio Frank X-Ray David eighty-four ninety-four. Recommend adoption of the resolution.
I motion, we approve the Resolution declaring the vehicle located at seven-two five-six Bowlin Drive as a junk vehicle as described.
I'll second that, and I'm not doing any of my Henry the Eighth jokes.
And Valenka.
Yeah, rough crowd.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
All right, seven oh seven. Resolution declaring a junk motor vehicle at seventy-two sixty-four Bowlin Drive. At that address, a two thousand and three silver Honda Odyssey with Ohio template, looks like Nora zero-six-two-five-six-nine. Recommend adoption.
I'll motion to declare a junk motor vehicle on seventy-two sixty-four Bowlin Drive.
I'll second.
Um, the comment I would make is, is for those watching at home and those here, all this legislation appears on a screen in front of us, and as we go through these, we're all keeping up with it. So, sometimes that's why we're looking at the screen rather than, than Chief Cordy. So, but these are all listed in our agenda, and, and just because we're approving it tonight, that still gives the property owner fourteen days to remove it before we move in to take it. So, we're not here rolling into somebody's property-taking stuff. We're just notifying you to get it out of there, so.
Gladly slow down if you ask me to.
No, no, I just, no, just so people know what we're doing up here. This is all, appears on a, on a, uh, screen.
A little screen.
A little screen, but I can see it just fine. No other comments.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
All right, Agenda Item M. Motion to issue a noise resolution permit to Club Trio Lounge. This is the first request for a permit in twenty twenty-three for this business. The request is a permit for May first, twenty twenty-three through October thirty-first, twenty twenty-three. It will also include two dates of March eleventh and March seventeenth. Recommend adoption.
I'll motion to issue noise resolution permit to Club Trio Lounge.
I will second it.
Discussion?
I just want to note real quick for the board that should you all approve this item, it does require the signature of each of the three of you individually. So, please do that without leaving tonight.
Sure.
They're great. They're a fine local business.
And they have good bands.
And they, they've done quite a nice improvement to their, to their building, so.
Facility is nice, yes.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Our Agenda Item N. Motion to authorize the Township Administrator to renew a personal services agreement with, with, uh, James Love, Jim Love. Resh now behind here is Pastor Jim Love has served with the Police Department as the Public Information Officer, P I O, since two thousand and fourteen. Jim's renewal is a one-year agreement. The rate of compensation is twelve hundred dollars per month for the length of the agreement. Pastor Love's role as the department's P I O allows the department to have a point of contact for all media inquiries twenty-four hours a day. This role as the P I O is one that handles the immediate need for information as soon as the incident occurs. The P I O needs to be available at all hours of the day and all days of the week. For the past nine years, Pastor Love has been that person, while attending countless community events, such as Public Safety Day, Open House, Coffee with the Chiefs, neighbor meetings, just to name a few. Recommend adoption.
I'll motion to authorize the Township Administrator renew the personal service agreement with Reverend James Love.
I will second it.
Discussion? I think he's quite the person to do that. He's always so well-spoken at any tragic event that happens in Coring Township.
And good events, too.
And good events. I'm just saying, he's, it's very hard to do what he does.
And he's on top, I mean, I can't count the number of times I've received some kind of notification of, usually from Mr. Mills and Mr. Wackback now, something's happened, and there's already, it's already on Cincinnati dot com or WCPO dot com, and there's already a quote from Police Information Officer James Love, and I'm like, wow, he's.
And, and that, that said, that twelve hundred dollars a month, that is with him being a outside contractor, and he pays all the federal, state, and local, we don't have local income tax, but he pays all the federal and state taxes that go with that, so that probably knocks it down to seven hundred a month. Depending on what his other income is, and he does a lot more than what you have described in here. He's gone out and talked to families that have had, uh, you know, kind of follow-up, and he's our one-man social program here.
Yeah, I mean, between, uh, Pastor Love and Jim, between Jim and Helen, I mean, we got a great team between the two and what they're able to do for us. Jim is, is every time, he was called tonight for this incident tonight, and he was already able to do everything he can with air. And, and then with Helen and her skills to be able to have a polished press release and, and what she's able to help provide to us is, is pretty great as well, so it's a good team.
I agree.
Can you give us an update on this tonight?
Uh, as far as I know, it's still in the.
Okay.
Recovery page? Yes.
Okay.
Guess I'll find out at eleven o'clock, just like anybody else. No other comments.
Okay.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Thank you. Last item, O. Motion to approve the Coring Township Police Law Enforcement Recruiting Initiative. There we go. Coring Township Police Law Enforcement Recruiting Initiative was first established in two thousand and fifteen and was provided a scholarship program to attract qualified applicants. Since two thousand and fifteen, we've attracted and sponsored three candidates, uh, by paying for their training at Police, um, I'm sorry, Peace Officer Basic Training Academy through OPADA, which is Ohio Peace Officer Training Academy. As stated in two thousand and fifteen, this program was first established. As we continue to grow and face the overwhelming challenge of recruiting, it was decided to finalize the initiative and put it into an established program. The world of law enforcement is ever-changing and facing new obstacles to recruiting every year. This program will allow the Coring Police Department to recruit the most qualified person for the job, not the most qualified person that has the OPADA certificate attached. And I, I hopefully were able to review this program. If there's any questions directly on that.
I'll motion to approve, uh, the Coring Township Police Law Enforcement Recruitment Initiative.
I will second it.
Discussion?
There is an item in here on number five, that if they, that requires a five-year commitment to the department, and there's a, a, uh, large penalty of fifteen thousand dollars if you end your employment early.
Five, the, the goal here is, uh, sixty-six months, so five years, six months. Uh, takes roughly six months from the onset of hiring an individual, uh, before they're through the OPADA class. And then the cost of new hire, so, uh, outfitting them with the equipment and everything about it, and then the actual cost of the class, that would be.
That's a good protection for us to recover those costs if, if that person would leave early.
Nope.
Okay.
So, I just want to take a quick second to commend both Chief Cordy for this initiative and Chief Walls for what he's doing with his recruit programs. Uh, having strong viable candidates for public safety is becoming more and more challenging in both Fire EMS and police. And both these individuals have recognized that problem and said, well. Having strong viable candidates for public safety is becoming more and more challenging in both fire and EMS and police, and both these individuals have recognized that problem and said, well, while that may be a regional and national issue, we're going to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make sure that it is not a Colrain problem. So just want to applaud them both for bringing forward programs like this.
Thank you.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Ms. Stronger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
I appreciate that, and I'll be working with Helen, we'll be putting something out, and we'll probably see an unbelievable amount of applicants based on this, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, up next, we've got the Public Services Department with Administrator, or Assistant Administrator Tiffany Mays.
Hello again, yeah, lower the mic. Okay, item A is a motion authorizing the township administrator to execute a contract with Alita Construction for the two thousand and twenty-three road program. The project was prepared for formal competitive bidding on bid express from December twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-two through January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, with a total of four bids received, and you should have seen the bid tabulations attached to the agenda. Staff recommends that the contract be awarded, which is the lowest bidder in the amount of three million, two hundred thirty-four thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-six cents, with a bid alternate in the amount of twenty-three thousand, four hundred, which this was also the lowest bid for alternative amount. The project has been identified in the two thousand and twenty-three capital schedule.
A motion that we would approve the contract with Alita Construction for the two thousand and twenty-three road program.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
The, the total amount, I think we had three point six million in the budget for that, and it looks like it's three million, two thirty-four plus the other twenty-three, so that leaves us three fifty that.
Cape ceiling, we're hoping that.
For, for other maintenance programs, and I, late last year, the, the three of us came together, and we actually doubled our expending, our, our spending on the road program, which is something very solid, that we can show people what we're doing with the money. And basically, this is all the streets that were scheduled for twenty-three and the streets that were scheduled for twenty-four, we're moving those all to twenty-three, which is our core function as trustees, is to maintain a system of roads. Going back to the beginning of townships in Ohio, so we are, we are doing that function with this. So thank you for the work you've put into it, and thank you to my fellow trustees for increasing the amount that we would spend on it, and I, I think it's going to be a great thing, and, and thank you for getting it done in February, so we can be ready to go in April, as opposed to some other places that don't have things ready till summer when it's too late to get on the list.
Any discussion, Matt?
Nope.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Ms. Stronger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Item B is a.
President, if I could just have a point of personal privilege?
Sure.
It, would there be an interest from my fellow trustees in like a five or ten-minute break?
You want to wait for after Tiffany's done and go to.
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
You're okay. Item B, motion to increase the capital budget for the Colrain Park Phase Three Playground renovation with not to exceed four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Public bidding for the Colrain Park Playground Phase Three was conducted from January twelfth through February third, two thousand and twenty-three. Four bid packages were submitted and received, which ranged in price from four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents to six hundred and forty-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars. Staff has formally reviewed the bids and supporting documents, and is recommending the lowest bidder for the project. However, the estimate is eighty thousand dollars, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents over the budgeted amount of four hundred thousand dollars, of which three hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars is funded by a state capital grant. It is important to emphasize that if, in order to complete the project in a timely manner, to take advantage of the current pricing, and also to meet the state capital grant deadline, it is recommended that the capital budget is increased to, but not to exceed the bid amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents.
I'll motion that we increase the capital budget for the Colrain Park Playground Phase Three project to four eighty-eight seventy-eight point seventy-five, or seventy-five cents.
I'll second it to put it on, on the floor, but.
Sure, that's what I wanted to do.
Yeah, I mean, my position on it is, um, um, move ahead without the eighty.
You said you were in discussions with them, did you see what they could cut for the eighty thousand dollars?
There's some value engineering that we can move forward with. One in particular, which we will more than likely move forward with, is to have the township direct purchase the equipment. That would give us a, an approximate savings of twenty-five thousand dollars, so we're still looking at that for quick math. Any Jeff?
Fifty-five?
To help me with that.
Like, write it on fifty-five thousand? You said eighty, it's twenty-five.
Yeah, so, so in reality, I mean, we'll have to look, and, and you've got the full list of items on the, the bid packet, but it'll probably be things like landscaping and landscape features that get cut first, and then, you know, that could mean things like benches and things like that are also put on hold and not purchased with this, and are things that are just added to the list for a future, future item to be purchased.
Our goal, and just to be clear, is not to spend the whole four hundred and eighty thousand, we will do everything we can to save as much as possible. We did meet with the contractor today, and they are also agreeable to meet that goal as well, to cut as much as we possibly can through value engineering. We just don't, that's unknown right now without getting into that, so.
I'm just looking down the, the, the budget, which is that first column, and then the, the four vendors are the other columns, and I'm trying to figure out where it was most off.
So.
The concrete walk was thirteen thousand, fifteen thousand more, that's fifteen of it right there.
The synthetic turf play surfacing was probably the most off, if you want to look at just budget to actual, I think that was.
It says six.
Sixty-nine versus a hundred and eight thousand.
Is that the same as the, the Fort surface that went?
They didn't give a product specification.
I, I thought you said, what did you say was just?
I think the, the intent is to try to be consistent, but.
I don't like that, I, I don't like that surface whatsoever.
And so that's another area that we could look at some value engineering of a different type of play surfacing as well. But i- if the board were to decide with this agenda item to not approve the increase, what I would recommend for the next agenda item would be to authorize the township administrator to sign a contract of up to four hundred thousand, which is the budget amount. So that way, we can still move forward with the project, we can still not have to delay and potentially go out to bid later and get vastly different and more expensive quotes back.
And if I can add, Mr. Wackback, the, if we are to do that method, we could also move forward with the direct purchasing order this week, and then there's all twenty-two week lead time right now, so.
Right, and that's why we need to get it to, we need to get it done tonight. So what was, what's on the floor is to.
Increase.
Increase the capital budget to, so what would you suggest we do, table that and make another motion, or?
No, no, if, I think if the board does not want to spend more than the four hundred thousand, for example, to vote no on this item, and then on the next item, as opposed to how it is currently worded as a motion for four hundred and eighty-five.
To execute a contract with Logan Creek.
Okay.
So that would then limit me, we'll have to make sure that we go back to them and just tweak that number on the final contract, but that'll be the, the last thing that we.
Okay. Okay with that?
Uh, yeah, I, I don't have a problem with giving you more maneuverability either, instead of four, make it four twenty or something, but. It's the four eighty, the eighty is just.
Yeah, and if that, and if that's something that you all would like to do, then I think you would need to introduce a separate motion to amend the capital budget to that four twenty or other, so.
Why don't we see what we get with this, and if you find it?
What if, what if this was approved to increase the budget? And we, and we did vote to increase it, so you've got four eighty-eight seventy-eight to work with, and then do what?
Then you would limit it with the contract.
Limit the contract.
Yeah.
Then we could limit the, limit item C to four hundred thousand, so that way.
You could do that, too, yep.
Okay with that one?
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, that's, that's a great idea, I think.
And so on that note, then we'll go back and we will work with the value engineer to get to the four hundred thousand for the contract, and that's where, as we get closer to opening, we can always come back to you all if, if there are certain things that we just can't get there on.
Right, if, if there's nine thousand dollars worth of stuff that you need, I, I don't have an issue with it, but when we get to eighty, I mean.
Right. Okay, so we're going to say yes?
We're going to say yes to this, and on the next one, we're going to set a number for.
I don't know what you guys are saying, I'm saying yes, we'll find out when you say.
Okay, we're just.
So.
Okay, Mr. Baker?
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Ms. Stronger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Okay, go for this now.
Item C, a motion authorizing the township administrator to execute a contract with Logan Creek LLC for the Colrain Park Phase Three Playground Renovation Project. The project was prepared for formal bid, competitive bidding from January twelfth, two thousand and twenty-three through February third, two thousand and twenty-three, with a total of four bids received. Staff recommends that the contract be awarded to Logan Creek LLC, which was the lowest bidder in the amount of four hundred and eighty thousand, eight hundred and seventy-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. Again, the bid tabulations are summarized in the attached agenda.
I would motion that we authorize the township administrator to execute a contract with Logan Creek Limited Liability Corporation for the Colrain Park Playground Phase Three Project.
In, in the amount of?
In, in the amount of four hundred thousand dollars. Is that what you're looking for?
Yeah. I, I think we need to amend the one that's here.
Yeah, you have to increase it because you just added the eight thousand.
Right, and that's where I thought you guys were headed, was to still approve the contract up to four hundred and then come back if we needed more for a change order at a later date, but if that's not.
That's, that's what I thought, too.
If they need a nine or ten more thousand dollars.
So we can second it and get it to the, I think we need to second it to get it to the floor.
Okay, I'll second.
Questions? So I would like to point out, Jeff, as, as we look through this bid sheet, the next three bids were for six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and forty-two thousand, and six hundred and forty-five thousand, so Logan Creek has seen something here that the other three were not, and if you go across the spreadsheet here, they're all around a hundred and seven, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and seven for the turf. I'm just looking for the other big item here that's that much different.
Yeah, and probably a big piece of the difference between the, the contracts is that Logan Creek did the first phase and the second phase of the playground, so there's definitely a lot more familiarity on their end with the site and with the, the earthwork that's going to be needed and some other items.
If I can also tag onto that, Logan Creek does one hundred percent of all of their work, and if you look under general conditions, that usually subsidizes the cost for subcontractors, so as you can see, there, the other three are highly depending on subcontracting.
And the, the middle of those three has eighty-eight thousand dollars in it for subcontract, and the, the other two have about twenty-five thousand, and then Logan Creek has zero, so they must be doing all their own work. And this is all in the agenda, if anybody wants to take a look at it, so, so, so let's authorize for.
Four.
Four hundred, and you come back to us at the next meeting if you need something else.
At next meeting or future meetings with change orders if they're required.
Okay, so we authorized four eighty, and what's on the floor is, is approving it for four hundred on this item.
Yes.
Which will help us get started, so you can start ordering this stuff. No other comments from me.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Ms. Stronger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
And the last item under Public Services, a motion to accept the two thousand and twenty-two road mileage certification. The signed mileage certification form is submitted to ODOT for the Ohio Revised Code Section four hu- four thousand, five hundred and one dot, point zero four. The form is prepared by the county engineer and reflects all changes to the total mileage for Colrain Township. At the end of two thousand and twenty-one, the total miles certified for the township is one hundred and fifteen miles, point, or excuse me, one hundred and fifteen point five seven two miles.
The end of twenty-two.
Yes. Two thousand and twenty-two was last year.
He said twenty-one, so.
I did say that.
It says add the change in the mileage, we went from one hundred and fifteen point five seven two to one hundred and fifteen point eight six five, so we added three tenths of a mile, just a little bit less than three tenths of a mile. Which is a subdivision street somewhere.
Do you want to motion?
Sure, I motion we accept the two thousand and twenty-two road mileage certification.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Just, uh, this is another one of those forms that requires each one of you to sign as well, so please do that tonight, so we can get that to the county, and I think Mr. McElroy, you pointed out that this is included with the tax budget, so I guess we're officially in two thousand and twenty-four tax, or budget season by doing this, so.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Ms. Stronger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you, okay, per request of trustee Waller, we're going to take a five-minute break?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Kind of break.
Okay. Okay, it's nine twenty-two, I, we're going to resume the meeting, and I do believe we might have to do a roll, roll call because we're all.
Ms. Orich?
I'm here.
Ms. Stronger?
Here.
Mr. Waller?
Present.
Okay, okay, development, let's go.
And as David dives in, he is going to request an amendment to the agenda when he finishes to add a couple items on to set additional public hearings, so stay tuned.
Can't wait.
We're out of letters.
We're out of paper.
All right, item A. This is a motion authorizing the township administrator to execute a grant and loan agreement with Hamilton County. Most specifically, that's the Community Economic Development Assistance Program, CDAP. So in two thousand and twenty-two, township applied for a three hundred thousand dollar grant from the county for the Colrain Avenue, John Rose and Shady Crest sidewalk project, and so that's what this would be for.
I motion that we authorize the township administrator to execute a grant and loan agreement with Hamilton County for three hundred thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
So that's a zero percent?
Yep. Or half of it.
For half of it, okay, and the other half is?
Grant.
Yeah.
And, and so something that we'll want to get direction from the board on when those payments start to come due is whether or not we're comfortable with using any of the proceeds from the Duke TIF. That is certainly in the area and certainly eligible to be used as part of that, but again, not a decision we have to make tonight, that's something that we can talk about as we get closer to a twenty-four budget season.
And at zero percent, I don't want to pay it off second early?
I'm with you on that one.
Because.
Right, I'm, I'm saying just that the annual payment is, is what it's.
So in three or four years, we're paying at about sixty-five percent of its value because of the rate of inflation.
Any other discussion, Mr. Stronger?
None.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Ms. Stronger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Next item is a motion to appoint James Joseph Seido to a permanent member of the Colrain Township Board of Zoning Appeals. And Mr. Seido is currently a, um, an alternate, and so there's a position open, and we're going to move him up to that if you are in agreement.
I motion that we appoint James Joseph Seido to be a permanent member of the Colrain Township Board of Zoning Appeals.
I'll second that.
Any discussion?
I don't know this person, I've not recommended him, and I stay away from those zoning boards because we're sort of, well, because we're.
You already voted for him once, so you're.
We're sort of the appellate level for that, though, so that's my interest in it.
Any discussion?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Ms. Stronger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Next item is a motion to appoint Carl Hauser III to an alternate position on the Colrain Township Zoning Commission. So, uh, Mr. Hauser is actually a former firefighter with Colrain Township, uh, he's retired, has time, wants to serve, um, interviewed him recently, and highly recommend.
Nice.
A motion to point Carl Warner Hauser III to an alternate position on the Corian zoning, Corian Township Zoning Commission.
I'll, I'll second it.
Any discussion?
It's not a person that I'm, that I know either.
I do not know him either.
You know him, because he comes all the time.
Okay.
I don't come to those meetings.
Okay.
No, he comes here all the time.
I, I see him in the back, but I mean, that's the only place I've ever seen him.
Point him out to me, okay.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Ms. Stronger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Next item is a motion to set a public hearing on March the fourteenth at seven PM for Zoning Commission Case Z A two thousand and twenty-three zero one. It's a major amendment to case number Z A two thousand and five dash zero zero three.
A motion to set a public.
At Stone Creek.
A motion to set a public hearing on March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven PM for Zoning Commission Case Z A two oh two-three dash. I'll motion to set a public hearing on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM for Zoning Commission Case ZA two oh two three dash oh one. As a major amendment to case ZA two oh oh five dash oh oh three.
I'll second it.
Discussion.
None.
None.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yes. I love the name of the company.
Axe.
Battle Axe.
Battle Axe, okay. So, uh, as you are keenly aware, we have been, uh, working on this demolition, uh, program for about a year. And so we're down to the, uh, the best bid that's come through and that is Battle Axe Construction. Uh, we were down to three homes. Uh, I think the last time I was here, we had one additional home. Uh, and, uh, Ms. Samika Simpson had spoken to the board a few times and had a variety of challenges and had decided she was going to just walk away because they had some family illnesses and some challenges that could not, uh, uh, surpass. And she ended up being able to sell it and I guess the good news is that the, uh, the new owner has been able to work on it and get it fixed up and, uh, not sure what their plans are, but it, we didn't have to expend the money and the time to demolish that, so. Still have these three, Capstan, Houston, and Nabita.
That lady was on, uh, that you just spoke of was on Lord Linda, correct?
Uh, I, I'm not sure where she lives. That's Shelley Bolden, uh, who's been here all night. And she actually was one of the purchasers
Okay.
of, uh, one of our vacant lots.
Oh, okay.
Earlier, uh, well, in last year, so.
Yeah, I remember seeing her, yeah.
So, uh, she has an interest in the disposal of these properties and I, I just had a chance to explain to her the process, so who knows, we may be dealing with her again.
I'll motion to accept a bid by Battle Axe Construction for the demolition of.
Uh, these three properties on Capstan.
So you think it's three?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the three buildings that have become unsafe, insecure, and unfit for human habitation.
And of course, your, the demolition bid tab is, uh, in your packet as well. You can see all those bids. They are public information.
Okay, I'll second Dan's motion. Then in, discussion?
Is, is, so it's been motion and seconded. My question would be if we pull that, that out of the mix, did Battle Axe bid this, assuming they would get all four of them? And was there some economy of scale in there that, that's gonna be affected?
Uh, I'm not sure if they were expecting an economy of scale or not, but we did ask each, uh, group to bid individually on each home with the expectation that there were chances that some of these could come in and go.
Okay.
Those bids are significantly different.
They did bid on, on Niagara as well.
I, I see that, but I just, they might have thought, uh, because I'm looking at the four of them, thirty, about thirty-eight thousand dollars, they can do all four, but can they do three of them for twenty-nine thousand?
Yeah, they did them, uh, they, yeah, they, whether it's twenty-eight, four, for the, for the three.
Right.
So they'll, that's what they'll end up.
But if they were, if they were separate bids and there's a chance they might not have been awarded all four anyway, then, then I guess we're fine.
Yeah, and we include language on our, our bids and RFPs stating that, you know, we reserve the right to, to go back and negotiate and to lessen the amount of work and different things like that as well, to provide us with a safeguard in the event that say we needed to get rid of all of them.
And when we had, when you and I discussed this, uh, last week, you mentioned there is a completion date of May first.
Yeah, I believe that they provided that with their bid that they would be done.
Okay, great. Well, I'm, I'm sure that'll be, uh, three neighborhoods. That'll be glad to, especially that one on Capstan.
I was gonna say, we've all cleaned up that one on Capstan. That one's ready to, yeah.
There, there is the potential, uh, if needed, that the state would grant some extra time. Uh, they, they realized that they had taken too long to.
Right, and our contract is with, our contract at this point is with Battle Axe and I think we could hold them to being done by May first.
Port authority, so.
And there's a big garage over there on Capstan. That's, is that included in the bid? It's a separate standalone building?
It's all, yeah, it's all part of that.
Okay, I just wanted to say that, so we set it here in the, in the meeting.
Environmental testing is required and remediation if there is a specialist and that would require a change order. So, and they're all aware of that.
There were some other environmental concerns.
So I find one of these vendors a little bit interesting, um, that, I, I guess we have to accept all bids, whether they're under federal indictment or not, is it?
Who are you talking about?
Battle Axe.
No, 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 Battle Axe is not. I'm sti-
No.
No, he's not. The other guy you're looking at, he's, his company still exists. He's just. You, you mean the guy from out on Round Bottom Road?
He, no, he's, uh, on the east side, actually. I see.
Round Bottom Road's out on the east side off of.
Of, 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 of Hamilton County.
Okay.
Yeah.
No more comments.
Okay.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yes.
All right, next item, um, i- is a little more significant because, uh, this is a recommendation, uh, to pass another resolution, uh, to extend the moratorium, uh, for one more year on new establishments that primarily sell or distribute electronic smoking devices and/or vapor products within Colrain Township. And so, uh, if you recall, we've had three, uh, consecutive one-year moratoriums. We were waiting on the state of Ohio to pass or take action, uh, that could have preempted us in some way. They were looking at it, studying it. Uh, they couldn't make a decision and didn't do anything. And so what, uh, what's in your packet is that we have undertaken a study of our own. Uh, as you will see on the memo, uh, these are what, what we found are the effects of electronic cigarettes and vaping, uh, physically and, uh, the recommendation is, uh, to extend the moratorium one, one more year. Not so much because of the report, it's because we are in the midst of the rewriting of our entire zoning resolution. Once we complete that, I think we'll have a much better understanding of what we might want to do in relation to zoning or any kind of limitations on businesses that primarily deal in these products. And so this would give us that timeframe to complete the entire zoning resolution rewrite and look at where, what we would like to do as it's a part of our whole comprehensive plan and then come back and address this in a year. That's the recommendation to pass a one, one-year moratorium on these businesses.
I'll move to, uh, extend the moratorium on new establishments that permanently sell or distribute electronic smoking devices and/or vapor products within Corain Township by one year.
I will second, and, um, just for the public, we, David, we went online and there is three, four on Colrain Township. The fifth run is in Green Township, but it's right, so there's plenty of places people can go to buy. These products also are found in our Super Americas gas stations, wherever you wanna buy. We are just limiting the establishment that primarily sell, which I think are detrimental environmental health issues, as your report suggested, so, um, that's what I feel about it.
Yeah, I, I feel, uh, dealing with, uh, young people on a daily basis, I, I feel very strongly about this. I, I think that it's part of our, part of our charge is taking care of the health and welfare of citizens within the township. And I, I think that there's a broken glass issue with it, too, meaning that the more of these that come in, the more that come in. There are certain businesses that attract like businesses and, and, um, aren't good for development.
This, um, moratorium, I voted against it last year for the same reason I'm not going to support it today. And that is because there's a lot of other businesses that sell these products. I think they're terrible products. I think it's gonna end up killing you. But then why do we have these other businesses that, that can sell them? And it's just, if, if somebody wants to come in and, and do that, I recommend you don't go there. I recommend you don't buy the stuff. But, you know, every, the businesses you listed and plenty others sell those products. And it's just an issue of fairness. Like I said, I recommend you never, ever buy or use these products, but that, that's my position on it.
At the OTA conference, I did the, we did the class on legalization of America, uh, of marijuana. It's not where, i- if, it's when. We're gonna have to come up with the same kind of, how many pop stores are we gonna have in Colrain Township? I mean, it's gonna come to that also. Um, so that's how I feel if we can encapsulate.
Well, and we did, and it was in the previous, uh, Board of Trustees, but, um, there was a move to put a medical marijuana and, and we voted against that. And my reason for voting against that was because it's federally illegal and there's banking issues with, with the money and I don't see how they can get, I don't see how they can get insurance to operate their business. This is different than that. These are legal products and I completely disagree with using them, but.
Marijuana will be legal, they said by, by late July.
There's plenty of people that are, are moving in that direction, but this is different than that.
Deal with that also.
No more discussion from me.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
No.
Mr. Waller.
Yes.
All right, so, uh, this is the point where I would, uh, ask you to amend the agenda to add, uh, three more motions to set public hearing. So, uh, if you recall, we set a public hearing for March fourteenth for the text amendment at Stone Creek. And so next week, the zoning commission is considering some text amendments to our zoning resolution. The three topics would be relative to fireworks, microbreweries, and medical marijuana. And so those text amendments will be coming out of the zoning commission and would then be presented to the Board of Trustees. So, uh, my recommendation is to set a public hearing tonight for March fourteenth on the recommendations that come from the zoning commission. And so it'd be on those three topics. Uh, you're not taking any action tonight other than just noticing that there'd be a public hearing on these three topics for March fourteenth. Medical marijuana, microbreweries, and fireworks. And there, s- most of those are just clarifications. Like, microbreweries, we, we only allow in a very limited, uh, zone and we want to expand that to B one and B two. And that is the recommendation that's gonna come before the zoning commission, so that there will be a greater opportunity. We don't know what we don't know. How many microbreweries have looked at Colrain and said, that'd be a great target market? There isn't one, but there's only, uh, uh, you know, one location, two locations where I could put it and I don't wanna be there. I'm moving on. So what we're trying to do is expand that opportunity in case there is somebody and it makes it easier for the, the Development Department to actually recruit microbreweries. So that, that's the, uh, the, the motivation behind that text amendment. Fireworks is just not clear in the, in the zoning resolution. We're gonna clarify that and the same with, with marijuana, medical marijuana.
And so the first, first item would be a motion to amend the agenda to add those three motions.
I motion that we would amend the agenda so we could consider those three motions.
I'll second. Mr. Baker.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yes.
Okay, so that, the first item before you then is a motion to set a public hearing on March fourteenth at seven PM for a zoning, uh, text amendment related to medical marijuana use, or medical marijuana.
Definitions.
I, I motion that we would set a public hearing on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM to.
Consider a text amendment.
Consider a text amendment on medical marijuana.
I'll second. Discussion.
So what text amendment are we considering with medical marijuana?
So when the prohibition was passed, the resolution did not allow, uh, medical marijuana, uh, I guess farms uh, in, in Colrain and sales and dispensaries. And so there was, I had, uh, uh, they left out some language in the definitions section of the resolution. So the prohibition's there, but the definition is not.
So the definition would be to strengthen the already existing.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Well, we're gonna have to get ahead of this.
And it's just they have a public hearing so people can comment on it.
Right, but I can vote no on a public hearing if it's.
That's, the intent is to just clarify in the definitions.
Right.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yes.
All right, and the next motion is gonna be a motion to set a public hearing on March fourteenth at seven PM for a zoning text amendment related to microbreweries.
A motion that we set a public hearing on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven PM for a resolution, a zoning resolution on, in definition on microbreweries.
Text amendment on microbreweries.
Second.
Discussion.
None.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yes.
Okay.
And the last motion was a motion to set a public hearing on March fourteenth at seven PM for a zoning text amendment related to fireworks definitions.
A motion to set a public hearing on March fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three, uh, to consider a tech, text amendment on definitions regarding fireworks.
I'll second.
Kathy seconded.
Sir.
No discussion.
No discussion.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yep.
So I have, thank you.
Thank you.
You can go home now.
All right, next up in the Administration Department, we have, uh, Assistant Administrator McElroy.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
The, uh, next item on your agenda is on page one sixty-six. Uh, this is a motion authorizing the administrator to execute a service agreement with Zix. Uh, you may recall that the board approved a service agreement for, with Zix, uh, to, uh, license Microsoft Office three sixty-five across the organization. Uh, this would update that service agreement in order to upgrade some of the licenses in the Police Department. Uh, a lot of the officers are currently working off of a business basic license, which really limits their ability to collaborate and, uh, limit, and limits our ability to, um, allow them to access the evidence that they need for, um, a lot of the cases that they're working. Uh, so making this upgrade to business standard and making some changes to how, uh, the IT architecture is set up for them will allow us to address those, uh, limitations. Uh, the additional cost for this service agreement is three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars and the staff recommendation is adoption of the motion.
A, a motion that we a- adopt is described by Assistant Administrator McElroy.
I'll second. Discussion.
And I'm looking here under special terms. You said the amount of it is three thousand nine hundred and fifty-two dollars?
That's correct. And if you're looking at the agreement itself on.
It says eighteen nine twenty-five and then there's a fourteen thousand nine hundred and seventy-three dollar credit.
Correct.
Because we're just upgrading, but that's what we had left on our previous subscription.
Correct.
Okay.
So this is the additional upcharge for taking those licenses from basic to standard.
Right, and that, that's kinda what Microsoft does now, is they want you to, there's no option to own things anymore. They just want you to lease everything.
Any discussion?
No.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yep.
The next item on the agenda is page one sixty-nine in the board packet and this is a cleanup item from the organizational meeting. Uh, in January, the board, uh, adopted a resolution, uh, to transfer funds from, uh, various, uh, from the general fund to parks and to the community center uh, and also, um, authorized the transfer of eight hundred thousand dollars from the fire fund to a special assessment fire bond fund to make debt service on the, uh, two new fire stations. And that, uh, Fund three three oh one, the fund that was referenced to be the recipient of that transfer, was actually the incorrect fund. Uh, the correct fund is Fund three one zero one, so this resolution, uh, makes that clarification and will allow us to complete the transfer so that when it comes time to pay debt service, we will be able to do so. Staff recommendation is adoption of the resolution.
A motion, we approve the resolution authorizing the transfer of township monies to other township funds.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
None.
No.
None.
Ms. Orich.
Yes.
Mr. Unger.
Yes.
Mr. Waller.
Yes.
Thank you, board.
All right, and I'd like to invite Assistant Administrator Mays back to the dais for the next two items.
Hello again.
Hello, Tiffany. Welcome back.
Okay. Item C is a motion authorizing the township administrator to execute an electric aggregation agreement at a rate not to exceed seven point five cents per kilowatt hour for a period of up to two years. Colrain Township has an. Colrain Township has an electric aggregation program with Dyna-G that is set up to expire this May of 2023. The current rate is 4.99 cents per kilowatt hour. Duke Energy runs two auctions per year, which are used to set their default supply rates. This year, their fall auction returned a yield of 11.5 cents per kilowatt hour, much higher than what we're recommending. This indicates that rates are trending high and Duke's rate to compare with will be trending closer to 9.5 cents per kilowatt hour. The contract will remain, will maintain the ability for residents to opt out of, without penalty. The recommendation from staff is to adopt a motion and approve.
A motion to authorize township administrator to execute an electric aggregation agreement at a rate not to exceed 7.5 cents per kilowatt hour for a period of up to two years.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
This is just one more example of how our national energy strategy and program is failing us miserably. This is a 33% increase in the cost of electric.
And we try to keep it down. We wait, we try, we really do.
This has got everything to do with what's being done at the federal level and trying to go green and get off of our natural resources. And this is when it comes home and that's what we're going to be paying for this year. And Mr. Unger's not happy about it, but I mean, it is what it is. So...
Any discussion for you?
No, I still think that with regard to this aggregation, and I don't know that if it's a messenger or message problem, I still think we have a hard time getting this across to our citizens as to what it is, what they can and can't do. And then we have people that work, let's say, off the books, that go door to door, that...
Yeah. So one of the challenges with aggregation that we run into quite a bit just has to do with the customer service lines at Duke. And so, and Chad Shafer, the Government Affairs Rep for our region, him and I have talked about this several different times. Their call centers are all based out in North Carolina. Aggregation isn't a thing in North Carolina. So they get calls from residents saying, "Hey, what's this charge of my bill"? Well, they don't necessarily understand because they're not in a system that even remotely touches what aggregation is. So then usually, the next call is to us and we use that as an opportunity to educate and bring people up to speed. From a public messaging standpoint, at times, we've pushed out, you know, what the rate to compare versus what our rate did and different things like that. Those numbers show that typically, over the course of a 12-month window, the aggregation program does better than the Duke rate. But there are folks that if they really wanted to and they were savvy enough, could bounce from aggregation company to aggregation company every month and really save a ton of money. But it's like playing the stock markets. You know, you got to really be in tune with this stuff. You got to really watch it and you've got to stay on top of it. The predatory piece of this, I think you alluded to as well. We've tried to address through some fun, you know, social media videos and things like that. But really, if somebody's going door to door asking to see your energy bill, they're probably not with Duke Energy. And if they sign you up for a program, be sure to read the fine print. A lot of them will be for, you know, 36-plus months. And year one may be really, really low, but years two and three may be three to four times what you would have been paying if you were on our program. The nice part about the township's aggregation program, and probably my favorite part, is the fact that we do have an opt-out at no charge. So if you truly don't want to be a part of the program, you want to stay on Duke's rate or you want to go find your own, you are welcome to do that and it's not going to cost you a dime to do it.
And it's right in here in the description. It says...
And it doesn't cost anything to opt back in either, correct?
Unless you're with someone who...
That has a contract, so it's...
But if you're with Duke, it does not cost anything to opt back in.
It's a constant source of frustration for me because the number of times I've been approached by citizens and said, "Well, you got us in this agreement". And I'm like, "Let me see who, I have no idea who the company is."
Yep.
And I don't know what the answer is, but there are some people that really got taken advantage of this last go-around. I think for exit fees from predatory companies. So, and I know that you guys made that video on my request because I said, "Look, these people don't understand what's going on here because they get bombarded by so much of it. We're around it all the time, so we know who these companies are and what they do. And for somebody that just hears about it once or twice a year, it's difficult to kind of parse through all that baggage to see what the real, what the truth is. So I don't know what the answer is, but please keep on trying, like you did with the video, and I think it's...
I still think it might be behoove of Helen, maybe to put another, "We are, this is the company we are using", and promote that company and watch predatory. Just a simple, this is the company, Colrain Township, is going to use everything else as predatory or watch your contracts. Just put us something.
When we have the finalized contract, so once, once this motion, assuming you all were to approve it, is approved, I would let Energy Alliances, who is our broker, know. And then they would watch the markets, tell me when the exact best moment is to sign at the lowest rate that we can. Then I would sign the contract, bring that back to the next agenda as a consent item. We would know who the vendor would be, whether it's Dyna-G or a different vendor, Ghost Go-Around, Constellation, who knows who it could be. But we could work with Helen to make sure we get that message out.
And to kind of react to Mr. Unger, I'm frustrated with the cost too. When I spoke to somebody about a month ago from Energy Alliance, his comment was, "If you don't, for those townships that don't lock it down, wait till you see nexters' bills."
We're seeing it right now, Matt. This is the exact result that you get from the program that was voted for two and a half years ago.
I think you're receiving much higher.
With this current federal administration and to the folks out there that are struggling to pay their bills, the gas went from 39 cents to 81 or 82 cents in one contract change. And this is going from about 5 cents to 7 and 1/2 cents. So that's the 33%. So that's what people voted for two and a half years ago. And this is what, this is what we get. And it just affects everybody. And it's, it's taken 100 years to build up the infrastructure that delivers our natural resources such as coal, oil, and gas. And the folks that are making these changes are trying to jam all this stuff in in 10 years. Well, the roads, the system of utility poles, the pipelines and everything, it's something that developed organically over the last 100 years. And to try to jam all this stuff in in 10 years, this is what you get. And that's why I'm, nobody has to second guess what I think about it. That's what I've always thought. I haven't, I'm pretty solid on it. So...
You probably use a gas oven and that creates all the problems.
Mr. Baker?
Go ahead, Jeff. There's nothing left to say.
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution to modify the organizational chart. This resolution contemplates the following changes in the organizational chart. One, change from administrative assistant to EMS coordinator. Two, change from part-time fire inspector to part-time public educator. Three, the addition of a community paramedic. And finally, the addition of a planner. Additional details on the changes in fire personnel can be found in the attached proposal in your packets. The need for the additional planner role has been identified by the Development Department through a high-level review of workload and tasks from the prior year. Zoning requests and permits reached an all-time high in volume in 2022. Given the ongoing development throughout the township, this will not likely slow down in the short term. Staff recommends the adoption of the resolution and approval.
I motion that we adopt the resolution modifying the organizational chart.
I'll second that.
Discussion?
And the part about the planner, that's when Marty left a couple of years ago, who is marvelous fellow. I don't think you ever met him. I mean, we've been in need over there since. And that was a position that just never got filled with somebody of his, of his abilities. And, and so that's what, I understand what the rest of it is also. So thank you.
Mr. Baker?
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Board. We do not have any old business tonight that I'm aware of. And the next items on the agenda are going to be consent items, which I'll read for you all here in a moment. You'll notice that there are a lot of promotions and hirings. We're seeing in our police and fire departments with retirements, this sort of trickle-down and cascade. So that's why we have a lot of these on here. So with that, the consent agenda tonight, items are promotion of a battalion chief in fire and EMS. That would be Captain Eric Toward. And he would have a wage of $36.08 per hour. There's a promotion to fire captain, and that would be current Lieutenant Ryan Frank and Lieutenant Scott Becker. And their wage would be $34.51 per hour. There's a promotion to fire lieutenant, and that would be paramedic Alex Seamer and paramedic David Derbyshire at a rate of $32.94 per hour. There's a promotion to full-time firefighter EMT, and that would be Nolan Thorne at $20.86 per hour. There's a promotion to EMS coordinator, and that would be current administrative training assistant Jen Pleger at a rate of $30.88 per hour. There's a new hire, and that would be for a full-time firefighter, paramedic, and that's Ed Shannon at a rate of $24.72 per hour. We have a promotion to lieutenant in the Police Department, and that is Sergeant Jamie Penley at a probationary rate of $50 per hour. Contingent on completion of probation, his rate would change to $53 per hour. There's a promotion to lieutenant, and that would be Sergeant John Midendorf at a rate of $50 per hour for probationary rate. And on completion of probation, his rate would change to $53 per hour. There's a promotion to sergeant in the Police Department, and that is current Officer Zach Meyer at a rate of $43.62 per hour. There is a promotion to sergeant in the Police Department of Officer William Hane, and that would be at a rate of $43.62 per hour. There are new hires of police officers in the Police Department. The first is Anthony Mountjoy at a rate of $37.50 per hour. The second is Logan Kesterman at a rate of $33.65 per hour. The next is Tyler Large at $33.65 per hour. Then we have the hire of a cadet in the Police Department, and this would be Jack Yelmgren at $15 per hour. And on successful completion of the Police Academy, he would then become a full-time police officer at a rate of $33.65 per hour. After that, we have a new hire, and that would be a records clerk in the Police Department, and that is Megan Godby at a rate of $15 per hour. We then have a donation, and this is to the Fire and EMS Department from Joan Leibenthal of $100. We then have a donation to Fire and EMS from Paul and Lindsay Applegate, and this was $150 in Kroger gift cards. The next item was a contract that I signed with G-Works, which is fleet maintenance software, at a rate of $4,000. The next item after that is a contract with the Standard for part-time firefighter life and AD&amp;D coverage per their new collective bargaining agreement. The next item is a contract with the Season Good Foundation. This is actually a grant for our intern where we will be receiving $5,760. The next is an engagement letter with Plattenburg for accounting services in an amount of $3,000. After that is a contract with TerraCon for Geotech at Station 26, and that is for $8,650. The next is a contract with TerraCon for Geotech at Station 102, and that is at a rate of $8,650. The next is a contract with Axon for redaction software services, and that is a trial. So that is a $0 contract. And the last item on the consent agenda is a contract with Power DMS. This is a training software for the Police Department, and it is at a rate of $117.65. And I would recommend approval of all consent items.
A motion to approve consent items A through Y is presented in the Board Packet.
I'll second it.
Discussion?
None.
No. None.
None. No.
None.
Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Mr. Waller?
Yes.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you, sir, on a very aggressive agenda.
Okay. Fiscal office report.
Thank you, Board. I just have a couple of things. We are still working on the December financials. I spoke with Mr. McElravy. And everything's balanced. It's just that there's a lot of year-end stuff that we're still working on. So that should be completed. And just bear with us and it'll be put online as soon as possible. Secondly, I also attended the OTA conference. And one thing that I took from it was that there could be some long-awaited legislation in Ohio that could end up helping, long overdue to help townships out. So more to come on that. But, and then lastly, we have completed 60 public records requests for this year. We have about four that are still, we're still working on. But we're getting those out as quickly as we can. And that's all. And happy Valentine's Day, especially to all the Baker girls that I didn't really get to see today. So I'll make, we'll make it up this weekend or something.
Take them home some cookies. Okay. Do we need, is there a need for an executive session? Thank you.
Probably appropriate.
What? I said, "Thank you". Okay. So are we, are we allowed to adjourn now? Oh, sorry. Sorry, you got a question?
I was going to motion to adjourn.
Okay.
I second that we would adjourn at 10:01 PM.
I was just going to look at the prime time. Okay.
Mr. Baker? Ms. Orich?
Yes.
Mr. Unger?
Yes.
Minister Ward?
Yes.
Yep. We are now adjourned.